If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Marvin Whitworth will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Marvin?
Let us bow together. Our heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful for the many blessings of life, for the life itself, and for the many wonderful things you provide for us. Father, we're so thankful for our country, for this county in which we live, and for all the things that we have. Father, we pray that you will ever allow us to have these things, and we pray that as we make our deliberations tonight, that we will protect the interest of our county and of our citizens, that we will make the decisions that are best in the interest of all. Father, we pray that you be with those that are hurting tonight, those that are sick, those that are sorrowful. We pray that you be with us in all that we do. Father, forgive our sins, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. This time, I'll call on our vice chair, Pettis Reed, for the meeting, for the reading of our May 9th and May 23rd meeting minutes. Commissioner Reed?
Mr. Chairman, I've read through both sets of these minutes, and I found no problems. I move for their approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for May 9th and May 23rd. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? A motion to approve carries. Thank you. We have one item that has been withdrawn from our agenda tonight, and that's item 6A, an item that was submitted for preliminary plan, and that item number is 22-1008 Pine Valley Farms. That preliminary plan will not be heard tonight. Item 6B, we have four items that have been submitted for rezoning requests, and let me go ahead and make the announcement. You may want to make a note that this body is a recommending body before the county commission, and the recommendation coming out of the planning commission will be heard at the county commission meeting on August the 13th. It will be a Thursday evening, and usually those rezoning requests will be heard at a public hearing at about 6:30, and that will once again be on August the 13th. It's Doug's fault. Scratch ad, it's August the 11th. Thursday, August the 11th. Thank you, Doug, for bringing that to my attention. Once again, 6:30, August 11th, here in this courtroom. Item 6B1, item number REZ22-016, Jose Cruz Santiago. The location is 4211 Woodbury Pike. Commission district is 4. The county commissioner is Robert P. The size of the site is approximately 2.3 acres. The tax map is 104. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density and RL for residential low density. The proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. As you stated, this property is located along Woodbury Pike. The applicant would like to zone the subject properties, all of the smaller one at 4211, as you can see on the map that Mike has out, that's zoned RM, and then just a portion of the one that's behind it has the same address point on it, but just a portion of that, for a total of about two, two and a half acres, roughly, is what we're talking about. Information provided by the applicant states that their hours would be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturdays from around 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. He currently has one employee. Again, he would use all of parcel 79 and then a portion of the larger tract. Should this be approved, he will have to get a surveyor's description of that larger tract of the area he wants to rezon for the resolution. A concept plan, hand-drawn renderings are included with your agenda packets. It's not a planned development, so this isn't something that he's bound by, but it gives you an idea of what his intentions are. Development does have access to Woodbury Pike and will continue to. We do have concerns if there's adequate room for the required improvements on the property, which include his detention for drainage, any buffering parking, plus his septic area. He hasn't marked on the property, but having several conversations with the applicant, tried to make him aware that there's a lot that goes into this, that all has to be done through an engineered site plan, so I wanted to make sure that he was aware of that. Again, buffering would be required. This would be a type 2 buffer along residentially zoned properties. This has an average width of 30 feet, which can be reduced to 15 if they use a solid visual screen, which would be like a privacy fence or wall or something like that, along with plantings. And, of course, they would have to meet the performance standards. Not sure if the applicant is present tonight. There's a lot of people here, so it's hard to tell if he's here or not, but he's raising his hand, so he is present. So with that, we did receive several phone calls about this. Most of the calls I received were informational, or someone that just didn't have much concern of what they were trying to do, but I know I've talked with the commissioner out in that area, and he said he'd received several calls, and I think there are some people here to speak in opposition tonight as well. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff at this time? The applicant here? Would you please come forward? You would address the commission as to what your plans are, what you have planned, and what you want to do with that piece of property? Would turn around? Face them.
And I don't speak good English, but you can understand me, but it's for service, like tire shop. I try to help the best I can. Now, I'm doing the mechanic, mobile mechanic. I help a lot of people. I try to help. If somebody can need help, I can do it.
Any questions for the applicant? This time? Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Please. Thank you. Ready for a public hearing? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ22-016 Jose Cruz Santiago. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. You would give Gail your name and address?
I've lived on Woodbury Street since 1960. This is not a good place for a tire shop or mechanic shop because it's right in the middle of residential property. It's all flat rock or bluff rock, so it would be hard to get a drainage thing or anything like that going for him. As of now, the drainage that comes off that land comes down to the highway, goes down beside the highway and goes under a cover right behind my house, goes right behind it and goes down and goes into a great big sinkhole over there by where what we used to call heat craft is. When I was a kid, I used to play in that thing, but I've talked to several of my neighbors. I have several of them here. I don't, I haven't found anybody in favor of having it put there. To bring it to your attention, we already have a tire shop within two miles of our house. We also have three junkyards within the neighborhood of our house. And businesses, we have two local establishments. I don't know what the proper word would be for bar or grill or whatever they are. We got that where we, in our neighborhood, but they're put in positions where nobody sees them, or they're on a corner of a road, like Rixland Road or Twin Oak Drive. We, as our community, we'd like to see it grow with homes and natural things going on, and that could be a good thing right there, but to put a business, when you've got a house sitting here and a house sitting here, four houses here, my street is a dead-end street that traffic would be going down and circling around onto Vance, and then Murfreesboro Street already gets the traffic from heat craft, Feed America, and all them factories back there. So we have quite a bit of business around us. We don't need it right in our front yard. I would hope that you would respect our thoughts and our property to not approve this because it's just not the right place to put it. I'm not even going to say it's not the right time. It's just not the right place. I've lived there. I don't know how many of your commissioners remember Mr. Clyde Elrod sold my mom and daddy their house on Woodbury Street, and we've lived there since I was seven years old. So I've been there 62 years, and I would not like to see that come into a neighborhood that's been one of the nicest neighborhoods you could ever live in, and our neighbors are very close. And once again, please consider not letting this happen to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to do is look around you tonight, and you can see that the commission will probably be facing a very lengthy night. Our guidelines are three minutes, so if you could hold your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate it. I'm not going to sit you on a timer, but be mindful.
Hi, my name is Shelley. We moved into, I live on Woodbury Street. James Paul's my neighbor, and we've been there since my son was five years old. He just graduated Oakland High School, but I'm with James Paul. We just don't think, I just don't think it's the right place for a business. I mean, we're, you know, it's a neighborhood. There's homes everywhere, and it's just not what we want to see. Like I said, we get enough traffic where people cutting through the John Bragg Highway, and, you know, there's enough going on, and just adding a business right in the middle of houses, I don't think's a good idea. Thank you.
Commissioner P.
Robert P. I reside at 4047 Bibbins Hill Road, Readable, Tennessee. I am the commissioner in District 4. I have received several calls on this issue, and the calls that I've received is that this is a quiet neighborhood. Many of you may have heard the name Loafer's Rest. James didn't say that, but that's what the area's basically known as. It's residential housing. They'd like to keep it that way, and that's what I would recommend. Thank you.
My name is Paul Allenbaugh. I live on 101 Woodbury Street, and I think having this tire shop come in, in that area, I live catty-corner from where that tire shop would be. There's a lot of traffic that already goes through that area, and I think it's going to create more of a problem just from coming down the street, not even including coming off of John Bragg and onto Woodbury, speeding them out onto the main road just to get to the tire shop. So I think there's going to be a problem created. We prayed right before the meeting about improving the quality of life, and I think putting that tire shop kind of takes it away from the neighborhood. It's designed to have homes in that area, not homes and residential or commercial properties. I think when you start adding those properties there, it's going to take away from the neighbor's quality of life, and I think that's one thing that this neighborhood deserves. So hopefully, you guys will consider that. Thank you.
Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Doug, maybe Mike. We've heard some comments on water, on drainage, on traffic. Have any comments on that?
I mean, as far as, I'll let Mike handle the drainage side of things. As far as traffic, I mean, until we have a, if this were to be approved and until we see an actual development plan, we would probably reserve any kind of a traffic study until that time, just to determine if sometimes the zoning is placed and then plans change, things happen, so we would probably reserve judgment at least until that time, since this is not a planned development. But we would evaluate that, again, should it be approved, and then if we felt that there were traffic improvements necessary, that'd be a time we could do it at site plan review. But again, I'll let Mike, I'll defer to him on the drainage and things.
Soil will be a challenge with the existing bradable and glatable rock out here unless they're planning on using the existing system. They will be allowed to tie to that system, but if it fails, there might not be enough soil to establish a new system. So that's something to consider, but drainage, it would have to meet any of our rules and regulations for any new improvements. So if it did get approved and went to site plan phase, we would have to make sure there's no impact on the neighbors, so they would have to provide stormwater management somehow and make sure they didn't overtax the downstream system.
In light of what Mike just said, and the commissioner from that district and the neighborhood, I'll make a motion to deny.
Particular reason?
Mike's talking about the probability of septic systems unless they've got an existing one there, and they probably don't have, if they do have one, an alternate is probably out of the question, so that's what I guess we would hang our hat on right there.
Thank you, Craig. If I could add something to consider with a motion, there was some discussion about, you know, timing regarding, you know, obviously, our plan does show this in a development area, but of course, that doesn't mean that every development that you see within a node automatically means you have to approve it. I think there is a timing element involved in a lot of things. I think there is some discussion about that tonight, about, you know, is this really the right time for a zoning like this? I know the one gentleman spoke, said it wasn't so much a matter of time, just didn't like the place, but, I mean, as time goes on, this may become an area that is more and more attractive to growth. We'll just have to wait and see, but maybe now's not the time for that.
Right now's not the time. It's okay.
All those included in your motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second to deny item REZ22-016 Jose Cruz Santiago. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion to deny carries. Unless the applicant decides to pull their request, it's still scheduled to be heard before the county commission on August the 11th.
That's correct.
And so you need to make your plans accordingly, and if it's pulled, there'll be as much notice as possible that we'll get out. But once again, it's still scheduled to be heard before the county commission on August the 11th, and the recommendation from the planning commission will be to deny. The county commission will make the final decision. Item 6B2, REZ22-017 Max Orlett for Silicon Ranch Corporation. The location is 3101 Highway 269, Christiana Road. Commission district is 6. The county commissioner is Veronica Buchanan. The size of the site is approximately 43.6 acres. The tax map is 172. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. The proposed zoning is for a PUD, Planned Unit Development for Solar Farm. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My presentation and the staff remarks are going to be fairly brief tonight. The applicant team is present. They have a pretty thorough presentation that they'd like to make, but I just want to kind of hit the high points of this. Materials submitted by the applicant state that they intend to construct, own, and operate a 3.25 megawatt solar facility, a solar farm on this property. The facility will be made up of the solar panels, an inverter, transformer, and various materials for mounting the solar panels, such as steel poles, cabling, et cetera. This facility will not be occupied, although maintenance vehicles will visit the site periodically. They plan to interconnect this farm to the Middle Tennessee Electric Power Network using what's called a power purchase agreement. There's some information on your iPads about that. Again, the applicant's team, I'm sure, will go into a little more detail as far as that's concerned. There is a concept plan that's been included, which can be found inside the pattern book, which is a separate attachment from the agenda. We've also included some pictures from a site that staff took a visit to, in a similar site in northern Alabama, which is also operated by the applicant. I don't remember the megawatts of that one. I do know it was a larger facility than what they're proposing here today. Again, they plan on making a more detailed presentation, so I'll leave it at that. I will say that should this application be approved, an engineered site plan would be required. We run into these situations, especially with, not so much in these situations, this type of larger-scale rezoning, but in some of the smaller ones where someone will get a rezoning application approved, and then they'll think they can go out and start building things the next day. Obviously, that wouldn't be the case here or for any of the other rezonings that we'd look at. They would have to go through the site plan process, get building permits, et cetera. This property does have access to Highway 269, Christiana Road. The site will have an access gravel drive, gravel access drive, excuse me, accessing the main road, along with gravel drives throughout the site to maintain the panels and other equipment. Again, this will not be staffed full-time as there's not an office building, so there's not any dedicated areas for parking, like a parking lot or anything like that. Based on the information we received, traffic on this will be minimal. Staff has requested the applicant provide a type 2 buffer along residentially zoned property lines, which pretty much surround the property. There have been some additional discussions. There was a neighborhood, a virtual neighborhood meeting last week. I'm sure the applicant will speak a little bit more about that regarding the possibility of putting some plantings also along the front, which is not something we typically require, but they are willing to do that. But again, I'll let them go into more detail regarding that. Again, conformance would be shown on a site plan, and then, of course, our performance standards would apply regarding noise, dust, et cetera. I will say that when we went to the site in northern Alabama, very quiet, not a whole lot of noise, probably the noisiest item was the inverter. When you were close to it, you could hear it, but you could still have a normal conversation, so it wasn't overly loud, and I doubt you could hear it very well from any of the adjacent properties. With that, I know there's, again, the applicant team's present, and they have a presentation to make during the public hearing. One of the residents in the area who wasn't able to make it tonight also sent something for us to show, a video, basically, presentation. We can get that during the public hearing, but I just wanted to alert the commission that that is present. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Yes, Doug, I've got a question on this. If we approve this as a PUD, are they restricted to the solar farm, or could they turn in then and start a site plan for houses?
No. If they get approved for a planned development for a solar farm, that's what they're bound by, whatever is in the pattern book. So if they were to get approval and decided they wanted to start building homes, they would have to go back through the process to either remove the PUD or change the PUD to allow houses.
Other questions? Applicant available. Would you please come forward? If you would state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hi there. I'm Gina Brown. I'm the Director of Economic and Community Development for Silicon Ranch. I'm sorry Max couldn't be here tonight. He fell ill, but he is with us in spirit and probably on streaming, too. He's put a lot of work into this project, and just to answer your question now, we're not building homes. We're not in that business. Thank you all for having us here tonight. Am I going to flip through the slides, or how does that work? Should I step from the beginning?
Gina, go ahead and make some introductory comments. We'll figure out what just happened here.
I'll start by telling you about Silicon Ranch. We are a solar developer based in Nashville, Tennessee, so just up the street, and we're excited about the potential project in our backyard. While we develop projects all across the U.S., Tennessee is our home. The TVA footprint is our backyard, and I'm going to back up before, and you're not missing anything on my slides yet, don't worry, but I want to take it back a step on what we're even doing here tonight, why Rutherford County, why Christiana specifically, and it goes back to a partnership we have with Middle Tennessee Electric through a program that TVA has called their Flexibility Program, which allows utilities, local power companies, to produce up to 5% of their own renewable energy or energy and not have to sell that back to TVA. So what does that mean for the utility? Well, it means some substantial savings on their end as they're locked in at a certain rate to produce the power at a less rate and not have to sell it back. And what does that mean? It means it could stabilize their bills, not having to do increases or stabilizing the grid, money back in their pockets that they're not having to generate otherwise. Perfect. So we can flip two slides in. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So again, going back, Silicon Ranch, we were started about 11 years ago by former Governor Phil Bredesen and two of his cabinet members, and from there have grown substantially over the years, and again, across the U.S., and have our first project in Canada slated to come online and in construction. What makes us different than other solar developers? We think it's that our business model and the way we look at a project. It's important to us that we own our assets. We own the land. Therefore, we have substantial skin in the game for being able to develop, design, fund the process, fund the project, excuse me, construct, own, and operate. I'm going to back up before we get too much into the project, and I want to back all the way up to after we know that we're going to be working with Middle Tennessee Electric. And more specific about why this site. When we knew that we had this opportunity... And more specific about why this site. When we knew that we had this opportunity, our land team goes and sources land, looking for specifics on relatively flat, not a lot of wetlands, flooding, et cetera, and also proximity to a substation or power lines in the utilities district and where their territory. And from that day, after we figured that out and got the land, then we placed calls to Commissioner Veronica Buchanan, who I don't see. There she is. Hi there, Veronica, and Doug, who were very helpful in walking us through what was the best process for this as far as zoning goes, and what would be the best way to cite this and permit this for the county and for us. And we appreciated all of their questions and a number of other commissioners that came along on a site tour that Doug mentioned earlier into one of our facilities in Alabama that was actually significantly larger. It's 20 megawatts, and this project will be about 3.25, and we'll get more into project specifics. But those relationships, their questions that they asked, and I appreciate their due diligence that they did while we were doing due diligence on the site to see if it would work. One of the things that's really important to us at Silicon Ranch is the way we look at community. And we understand that not everybody's in the solar business. Not everybody understands the solar industry. So that's why education and being able to have conversations with the community, and specifically those that live nearby, is important. And we've had two community meetings since November of last year in person, thanks to Plainview Elementary School, who hosted us kindly. And then recently, we had a virtual meeting in order to answer some follow-up questions, and we also will continue to engage with the neighbors and to continue to answer their questions, comments, and address their concerns. Another reason that we want to come to the table is we don't want to just be a solar farm operating in a community. We do want to be a community partner, and whether that means through education purposes, or we're able to sponsor events that mean something to the community specifically, we look forward for those opportunities as well. Sorry about that. There we go. Sorry about that. Economic benefits. Again, we are the land owners, project owners, so therefore we put down a substantial capital investment. There are jobs created, though, as it's been mentioned, the operation itself is pretty self-sufficient. We're able to monitor it at our headquarters in Nashville, and then also through a third-party operator that comes and checks on the facility. The increase in the tax base, we use very little county services. We're not much on roads, water, et cetera, so therefore that's all going back into the county coffers. Getting more specific, and we have a more detailed site plan here in a second for you, but it's 43-acre site right off of Highway 269, so the southern boundary there. 3.25 megawatts. The one that he mentioned earlier, where he was showing pictures, that's about 20 megawatts, so it's about five to six times larger than this site will be. And again, interconnects with Middle Tennessee Electric's distribution network. Now, this is hard to see. I'm not sure if you guys have it on a packet or a little tighter. Okay, great. Okay, perfect. Great. Wonderful. So this is our preliminary site plan and concept layout. As you can see, we are adhering to setbacks of 50 feet off the front and rear and 100 off the sides per, through the PUD zoning that we need to accommodate. And as Doug mentioned earlier, that the facility needs to be screened on the back and the sides, but we've chosen to screen the front as well to help with view shed issues that the neighbors, forward-facing and from the street, can, to help with their view shed issues. And again, there, we can get into more specific questions about the site plan, but you can see that it's not utilizing the whole 43 acres, you know, corner-to-corner panels, and what we have to work around. And I want to note, example, down in the bottom right-hand corner, where it says pond avoided with buffer, we have got a setback off of that pond because it houses some turtles that some neighbors were really concerned about, and we wanted to keep them in their natural habitat. Now, this is more getting into visual site renderings. And again, for those of you in the audience, I know it's hard to see, because my eyes aren't that good, but you see the present view from, this is Highway 269. You won't be able to see it with, and then the second view, excuse me, is the view with just the panels only. And then this is with some renderings of trees that we would plant that could grow 20 to 30 in height. And then again, from another angle, present view, view of panels, and then proposed vegetative buffer. Again, this would be on the front, sides, and back, but we felt it was important to screen the front, since it is lacking natural vegetation there. A number of concerns have been addressed throughout our interaction with neighbors, officials, et cetera, whether it's around noise, glare, health and environmental concerns, property values and such, and we're happy to take any more questions on that at the right time. Thank you.
I have one question. I'm sorry. Didn't know you were through. Trees?
Yes.
You got planted. Will they be allowed to touch and make a complete hedge, or are you going to keep them open space between them?
I would, I'm not sure of the spacing between the trees, but I believe it will be, they will be planted in such a way to maintain a buffer as to its true intent of not being able to see through, to screen.
So they won't grow and make a hedge?
I think the intent is to not necessarily have them side by side, but yet make them a buffer, and again, to screen the view.
There may be a situation, Mr. Lynch, where you can kind of offset them. If you put them, most trees too close together, obviously, they grow into each other, and they, they kind of choke each other out. But if you do it in such a way where you kind of alternate the spacing a little bit, like you've got one in front, one in the back, one in the front, like, there's ways to do that. They can, it would still create more of a visual solid barrier.
Other questions?
So if it is, once it's planted, we will not be able to see the solar panels from the road. As I drive down the road, I won't see the farm.
There could be, probably, if you are looking through trees, you will see a solar farm. And then obviously, it's going to take a little while for the trees to grow. I don't want to pretend that we've got these magic trees that are all of a sudden their mature height, but the intent is to screen. Yes, sir.
There is a, I think it's similar to this one near College Grove. Is that pretty much, it's near my district, and I've seen it. It's been there for a few years.
It's not one of our projects, but I am aware that Middle Tennessee Electric has another facility.
I'm pretty aware, familiar with it.
And how do you feel about it?
It's been there for a good while.
Okay.
And I've hadn't had any complaints from it.
Good to hear. Pretty quiet, huh?
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see some photos in the presentation, but they say this may not be specific to this project. About how tall are these?
The panels?
Yeah, the panels off the ground.
So they rotate, they tilt, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I've got my other team members with me, that they can go up to about six feet, six to eight feet during the day.
Okay.
Oh.
You come up.
Apologies, Ally.
All right. And what's the approximate life expectancy of these panels?
Approximately 20, 25 years, but technology constantly changing.
And then what happens after that? Are these landfill? Are they recycled?
Recycled.
Okay. And the last question. If you were to like to put, if you were to put like a heat map on a active solar panel ranch, would there be a tremendous amount of heat given off from these acres, or is it pretty passive like everything else?
Pretty passive. There's, yeah, there's studies that are starting to show that it actually creates a cooling effect, but it's not something we would want to point to specifically at this time. I'd say what's consistent and known is that there is, we'd say, no effect.
Okay, so it's not like a killing field in terms of landscaping, grass, trees?
No, the panel itself, because of that, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's good.
I was going to say, kind of the tilt that it creates, right, is shading a lot of the grass underneath, so that's what's creating what we think is more of a cooling effect, if anything, because of that shade it's providing as it kind of rotates throughout.
Okay. One more question, I'm sorry. Since you mentioned this is a smaller farm, 3.25 million, right? Megawatts, megawatts. Give us, can you give us, like, is that how many households would that generate electricity for, or give us something we can put in our head as to what that output is?
So we estimate that's about 625 homes. But I want to be clear here. Once the energy goes into, the energy produced goes into the grid, it is with other sources of energy produced by Middle Tennessee Electric. So it's not necessarily this is going specifically to 625 homes, but that's the amount that we're producing, that's the capability of it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about the operation and maintenance of the farm?
Sure. So a lot of people have a lot of questions about this, because it's, well, who's there? Who's manning this? And we do have a third-party contractor that we work with that will monitor and check in, make sure everything's, I'm sure there's certain checkpoints they have there on a daily basis. But from our headquarters, it's almost like our control center, where all of our properties and projects, excuse me, operations are on panels. We're able to see when one is not producing, when there's a panel down, when there is any sort of hazard. So we're able to get them, people out there, the right people out there to remedy the situation if need be. We also work closely with local fire departments, that they understand if there was ever an issue, though there has not been one that we have had happen where it got to a significant level of anything wrong. We're able to monitor and get people out there quickly.
Mr. Chairman, could you speak to the security of the site itself, one for humans and for wildlife that may interact with that? I know I saw some fences in the Alabama project, so just for safety reasons and vandalism and things like that.
And there would be a safety fence surrounding the perimeter of the, a chain-link fence surrounding the perimeter of the project. And that is for multiple reasons. One, theft and people coming in to private property, and then also to keep wildlife out. But if, there have been other projects of ours where if wildlife was, it got in, or again, some live within, where we've built wildlife corridors, et cetera. Right now, actually, and this is not specific to us being in operation, but we're working with a local neighbor who we have a contract with for his cattle to graze, the site right now. We don't know if this will be part yet of our regenerative energy program, and that is our land management program, which includes sheep grazing. Also, to stay in touch with, our goal every time that we take on a project is to return the land in better condition, in the same condition or better, and hopefully better than when we found it. And I hope through some of the back-and-forth we've had with neighbors, that we've been able to get them comfortable on the safety around the soil and what we do to monitor and make sure, again, that we are returning our land in its best condition.
I have to go back to, it's been a few years since I dealt with solar panels and whatever. MTSU had done studies in the ag department over there, and they had an area set up with panels like this. They were storing energy for batteries. That's when they were doing the hydrogen car. That's when they were trying to operate without fuel, and they were trying to store energy to operate that hydrogen car. And then they got to the point where they had created such a panel field that they were selling electricity back to the power companies. But the panels are basically glass, aluminum, and sand. Am I not correct? Is that pretty much the construction of what's in those? So there's not anything, you know, a lot of people think there's something to leak out, or, but there's pretty much what the storage of those units are. Is that not right?
For the most part, and would you like to, anything you want to add on here? I mean, I make a joke about this, and some may not find it funny, so please pardon my sense of humor, but like anything, if you were to eat a solar panel, probably not the best thing, just like you wouldn't eat your television. But, one, I don't think I could work for, in an industry where I felt that people were around unsafe products, and the amount of people that work not wearing hazmat gear, just wearing typical safety gear, unless you were going, looking for trouble on a solar panel, I think that's the only way you'd find it. And apologies for a brief explanation on that, but I'm not an engineer, and I don't know how to get into the specifics of it. But if we need more specific, we can go there.
I have another question. Back in the winter, my wife and I considered solar panels for our house, and so in that investigation, I know this is not an inexpensive endeavor. You're fixing to spend millions of dollars. How many of those millions of dollars are going to come into Rutherford County? I don't think the solar panels are coming from Rutherford County, maybe not even from Tennessee. So how much of the money you're going to spend is going to come back to our citizens and the local community?
Well, the tax, the tax we pay comes back to the county.
So the people that are putting these up are going to be hired from somewhere else and not Rutherford County?
I hear what you're saying.
And the panels are coming from somewhere else, and so the money that you're spending on the initial outlay is not going to come back to our county tax revenue and employ our citizens?
I'm going to break it into two different questions. When you talk about employment, again, solar projects don't generate a number of employees for the long term during the construction phase, and we do everything that we can to hire locally. I also am confident that if there were local construction employees interested in this job, we have enough projects going on now in other nearby counties where there could almost be an effect of employment for a lengthy amount of time, if that was something that someone was interested in. So again, we do, it would be easy for us to sit up here and say, oh, we'll hire a local, but we do attempt that in any way that we can. And if anyone has ideas for, you know, if we get to that point of job fairs, job boards, wherever we should reach out, special, you know, MTSU, technical colleges, we're definitely interested in going down those avenues. To answer your question about the solar panels, we recently signed a contract with First Solar, and I should know where they are based, and I am so sorry, but I do know they're based in the US, and I know.
Ohio.
Ohio, they're headquartered. And we will be using First Solar solar panels on this project.
Other questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. So I know a lot of times people are concerned about things they don't know, or rumors or things they've heard. We've all heard about negative consequences of living near power lines or whatever else. So is there any truth to the concern that there could be some hazard in living near solar panels?
We have not found that to be the case. We, I realize that there is a lot of information out there either way. Our rule of thumb is consider the source, and we find the sources that we trust, and we stand by that information. One is from the University of, I'm sorry, NC State University, and their climate change, I think it's called the Center for Climate Change, and it's a white paper that was written in 2017 that I think holds pretty tight on as far as health and environmental concerns go, which we could go into. Unfortunately, last week, when we were having our virtual meeting, we were going to have a professor from Lipscomb's Department of Sustainability on the line to talk more about the health and environmental concerns. Unfortunately, he had a scheduling delay, but that's something we hope to reschedule and go into more detail on that. As far as other avenues, whether it is property values, which is also a topic that comes up often, we have hired an independent consultant based out of North Carolina, who, he got his Tennessee license, appraisal license in order to do some work for us on some other projects, and he's done substantial, and the amount of work that goes into this analysis, I didn't know how extreme it was. You're looking at so much- You're looking at so much data from across the United States, and it takes about six weeks to compile, and he's found now on two different reports we've had him do, that there's no change in, in home values, property values for living near a solar farm. Now, with that said, we all know what the housing market is like sometimes, and up, down, I want to share one story on that, that recently from a facility of ours in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, it is 50 megawatts, and so even a lot larger than our Alabama facility. And we're doing a small expansion there, so we went in for a rezoning and approval recently. And one of the planning commissioners in Hattiesburg is a realtor, a residential realtor. And the, Ally worked on the project, what, five years ago, to bring it online? And he said in that meeting that when we were first discussing the project, getting approval for the original project, that he was certain home values were going to decline. And I want to say too, that around this facility, we have an elementary school, a high school, a community college, some more condominium and apartment homes, and then a golf course and some very large homes on the other side. And it's, it is a very well-screened facility, but he said that he's been pleasantly surprised that home values have not had any decrease, and in fact, they're on the national average of being above average.
Being that this one is the size that you're proposing, and compared to the others that are so much larger, I know it's hard to look into the future, but do you plan expansion from this one, or is this, or is this partnership with Middle Tennessee Electric determining what their needs are? Is it based on what their needs are?
We are, we are prohibited at this site from an expansion, from a standpoint of topography and acreage. Middle Tennessee Electric, and, and they would have to answer this better, but I know that they likely have a higher appetite, but again, they, they're very conservative in when they're making their decisions on, on the ways that they need to bring renewables into their portfolio, and we hope we can be their partner on that if that's the case.
Other questions?
I'm reading this site equipment and materials. The inverter converts DC energy from the solar panels to AC energy. All the energy is then aggregated into a single point of collection, which I assume is onsite, right? And then injected into the electrical grid. How does, what does that mean, injected into electrical grid?
I, I mean, you know?
Yeah, it's just kind of a fancy way of saying that it runs through wires onto the grid. So, you've got, the energy is produced in direct current. And so, the inverter flips that because all of our grid is on AC, right? And so, then from that point, it runs through a medium voltage cable, which is underground up until the point that we get it to the existing distribution line.
How far away is that?
It's on the property.
Okay.
And so, that point of interconnection will occur on the property, it'll come out of the ground. It usually sits what we call on a riser pole, so it'll come out of the ground, come onto one pole, we've got one more with all of our metering, until it actually goes into the other pole that Middle Tennessee Electric goes.
So, all your connection and transfer is on your own property to Middle Tennessee Electric?
That's correct.
Good to know.
And that was, yeah, what made this site so attractive.
Anything else? God stay close.
We will.
Time we're ready for our public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 22-017 Max Orlett for Silicon Ranch Corporation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward and be heard. Uh, yeah, let's just do that. Do we need to spin the rules to show that? Okay, we, as Doug said a little earlier, there's a lady, a resident from the area, and she sent in a proposal, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's a little bit more than three minutes, but we'll give her the leeway.
Hi, my name is Janelle Zare. I'm a resident and neighbor that lives right across the street from the proposed solar farm. This is located on the 3,000 block of Highway 269, Christiana Road. The elevation of this road is about five to six feet above the property. They will be offering a vegetative buffer in order to block out the solar panels from, from view for the community. However, I wonder if this vegetative buffer will be able to really block several hundreds of feet of solar panels. I wanted to make you familiar with the area. There's some recently built, it's a growing area, we have about 20 new homes, they're really nice custom homes on by their garrets. This will not blend into a current environment, it will become an ISO for only a little trickle of power. In a recent study, a real estate agent was brought in to speak to property value loss. He stated that very minimal loss, less than 1%, may be positive, may be negative, when it comes to a solar farm being placed on a home. He quoted several studies, including this one from Rhode Island. I looked up the study, and the study showed up to 7%, an average of 5%, the closer you are to the property with the solar. While the homes are rural, there are several lower-income trailers and smaller homes, but the majority of the homes are custom homes. In the last one to two years, there have been 15 to 20 homes added. These homes, I would guess, are probably greater than a million dollars. The homes are approximately one to three miles from this property. The math on the average of 5% is a loss of 40,000 to 60,000 per home. Knowing, that is about a 600 to 800,000 value. Some of these homes are valued at more. Now, this number changes due to the distance, of course, and also the value. Taking the higher number of 7% on a 1.2 million home, the loss is $84,000 on a home. At this point, property values are on the rise, and we don't really know the value of my home and my neighbor's home and those around us. So, if you were to stop and consider, if you were to buy a home and you had a choice between two homes, there are no other considerations other than ones before a solar farm and one is not, would you choose the home from the solar farm? For pure reselling value, I would choose the one that was not. I recently had posted on social media, Facebook and Nextdoor, my Nextdoor post is an easy way to pull neighbors and an easy way to pull people that aren't in my thought wave. 50% were opposed, 50% were for this. With that, I say, they only disseminated this information to 1,000 feet within the community. Since it affects about a mile's worth of people within that community, I ask that you please delay the vote and that you will disseminate the information further within the community. My neighbor was only able to attend one meeting, he did not know about the first meeting, the second meeting, he was sick. As far as I know, there's only been three meetings, I've been told there were four. So, I feel like the information has not been disseminated well, there's not many people that know about this, and I feel like more people in the community need to know. Also, those people will not buy because of presumed health risks. We have many questions regarding health hazards. According to the World Health Organization, there is a health risk of electromagnetic hypersensitivity associated with living near solar farms. This condition is characterized by a range of symptoms that are triggered by exposure to electromagnetic radiation fields. My family has dealt with cancer in the past, and we struggle and are very concerned about exposure to the health hazards. A study in Australia found that people who live near solar farms are more likely to experience headaches, dizziness, and nausea. There may also be an association with cancer or an increased risk for people living near solar farms. There's a whole lot of studies out there that I have listed and have looked up, I can't quote them all. We requested to speak with a health expert, he was unable to make our meeting. Again, I ask that you delay decision until all the information is in. My point with this information is whether or not the solar farms causes health issues, there is a perspective, perspective that it does, which will be, cause a decreased value of my property, because perspectives matter to the buyer. In our last meeting, we had requested for a representative from MTE to speak, they were not available to meet. The questions related to electricity, where does it go? How does it affect my bill? How do I get, what does it help, how does it help me? Will the cost of my bill go up? Silicon Farms answered some of these questions, but we would really like to speak to a representative from MTE. I answered questions. While power is produced via another means, an inverter is used to convert it to the sine wave is different. This produces dirty energy, this can cause problems with technologies such as computers and TVs. How will this be disseminated to the community? More questions for MTE. This is a quick summary on solar energy and its efficiency. Here's just a few tidbits when it comes to solar power. The max rate in which sun energy can be converted to solar energy is 33%. Our solar energy is only about 26%. Batteries, the world's largest battery, Tesla, it would take 500 years for it to store one day's worth of power for the world. Did you know that solar panels are built from non-renewable earth minerals? The mining to obtain the materials for solar panels requires a 2,000% increase of mining of rare earth minerals, of cobalt, lithium, dysporium, high purified silicon, and phosphorus. The University of Technology in Sydney in Australia stated, "A global gold rush for energy materials will take miners into the remote wilderness that have maintained high biodiversity because they are not yet disturbed." This requires a large amount of energy in order to mine for more energy. On top of that, I read another International Renewable Energy Agency stated, "By 2050, the disposal of worn-out solar panels constitute over double of today's plastic waste." We posed this question to Silicon Farms, they do not have a plan, and were not able to state a plan or give us an answer on how they would dispose of these solar panels. We all know about the Green New Deal. This push for solar and government subsidies is due to predictions of our world as we know it ending. I'd like to point out that predictions are not accurate. For example, this prediction in 1989 is a study that came out predicting the Earth would be wiped out by the year 2000. Well, we're all still here. This is one of many. Our atmospheric environment is difficult to understand, it is as difficult as our brains. Scientists will only predict the weather properly for about 20% of the time. Okay, let's talk about Germany. They are leading the world in solar, wind, and power. They have reached 9%. And the reason it's only 9% is they have found that it is due to erratic weather resulting in erratic production of power. Here's an interesting fact. Due to erratic weather and lack of dependability in Germany, they're, they are leading in the use of fossil fuels, despite their effort to support with solar and wind efforts. This is because they require more fossil fuels, and coal in this case, to support their solar and wind energy as a backup. This has led to energy poverty, and caused an increase dramatically in their utility bills due to the switching back and forth from fossil fuel and solar and wind. The cost of solar and wind is expensive. Here's just an example, green energy versus fossil fuels. It costs 50 cents for fossil fuels to produce one barrel of fuel. It costs over $200 for wind to produce the same amount of power. Cost of solar is increased by 150% when you put in all the needs for producing the solar power. This solar farm lies on 43 acres, occupying only about half of the land, due to the need for buffers from a creek that goes right through the property and other pond. It will provide less than 500 homes' worth of power, and I got this number from their website to comparing another solar farm of equal size. This is just a trickle for MTE, it's less than 1%. If we need to proceed with solar power despite its obvious shortcomings that I have presented, is there not a better place in the county to put this? There are lots of flatland along the highway. Also, could we not look at more industrial area? Maybe work with companies like Amazon and the other large building going up on I-24 near Amazon? It seems there could be larger areas where this, a larger form, larger farm could be placed for a greater benefit. In review, this is a farming community, and industrial utility does not fit into the field of community. It will decrease the sellability of local homes. It will likely decrease property values, an average of 5%. There are possible side effects. At the very minimum, there's a perception of possible side effects by potential buyers. There's great cost for very little value. This is not the solution to a perceived problem. This is worsening our environment, let us not be a part of that problem. I ask that you do not approve this request for a solar farm in Christiana.
The public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I've been studying this a while, I've been to meetings, I've been to, I've visited the site with Doug Namm, and I think it's a great thing, but my only concern is to, just to make sure the constituents' questions are being asked, answered, and their concerns are being dealt with. That's my, that's my only, I guess that's the only thing I'm asking right now, and I'm going to yield this to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I kind of feel like that we're eventually going to see these type projects all over the county, supporting just sub-areas of neighborhoods as we see our county grow. I see it, it's part of the key of, of a diverse network of, of energy source that we're going to require. And none of it we like. We certainly don't want a nuclear plant, we probably don't want a hydroelectric plant, probably no place for that. Certainly don't want to burn fossil fuels. Solar farms are not all that pretty, and I don't think we have the wind for it, but we still want to run our air conditioners. My only concern is going to be the landscaping that they have out front. Just make sure that that meets the neighborhood's request for some sort of good screening there. Other than that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 22-017 Max Orlett for Silicon Ranch Corporation. No further discussion, we're ready to vote. Once again, have a motion and a second to approve REZ 22-017 Silicon Ranch Corporation. All who's in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Motion to approve carries, thank you. Once again, this will be heard at the August 11th full county commission meeting. Item 6B3, REZ 22-018 Nick Barlato for Rogers Group Incorporated. Location is Burntonob Road. Commission District is 9. The county commissioner is Joe Gurley. Size of the site is approximately 562 acres. Tax maps are 72 and 79. These are multiple parcels. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD for an expanded rock quarry. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, this is another application that's fairly complex. The applicant has a team here. I know they're going to be going through various aspects of this, but I'll kind of give an overview of their proposal. Materials submitted by the applicant state that they desire to expand their quarry not for more production per year, but for longer-term progression to better serve Rutherford County's rock and gravel needs for the next 50 years, excuse me. The current site's approximately 305 acres. This expanded area would be a total of 562. They're also proposing to add a concrete plant and an asphalt plant on the site to reduce the number of dump truck trips to and from the site. This existing quarry has been in operation since about 1985. Rogers Group purchased this business back in 2000 and has been operating it since that time. The Planning Commission did consider an expansion to this particular quarry back in 2007, but a decision was never reached and the application was abandoned several years ago. Since that time, Rogers Group has purchased several properties surrounding the existing quarry, and they feel that now is the right time to pursue an expansion request. There is a pattern book that was included with your iPads. There is a constant plan in there, kind of showing you how they want to progress over the next several years. There's no new structures being built for rock processing as their existing equipment would stay in its existing location. This is a plan development application, as was discussed, so the applicant can craft the request to fit their needs. We instructed the applicant to use the regulations of both Section 1408, which deal with mining and quarrying, and to specify which provisions they were varying. From pages 29 through 31 of the pattern book outline those differences. The main difference is for the distance requirement from adjacent properties, rights of way, specifically residentially zoned property. The required setback, if it were going to be either industrially zoned or as a special exception in the agricultural zone, would be 1,500 feet. The applicant is proposing 400 feet, which would not be, of course, until later in the life of the project. Their pattern book states they're currently about 1,700 feet away from the property line. We held, they held, I should say, a neighborhood meeting at St. Elizabeth Orthodox Christian Church back on June 2nd, where much of the information in the pattern book was presented to the neighbors in the area. There were a lot of questions about blasting and vibration, noise, dust, and also traffic. Again, during that, after that meeting, I talked to some of the representatives there from Rogers Group and asked them to make that same presentation to the meeting tonight, and there is a PowerPoint that we'll have that they'll go through here in a little while. This development will continue to have access onto Burntonob Road. According to information provided in their pattern book, 90% of the truck trips leaving the quarry head to the east toward Veterans Parkway and 840. Page 16 of their pattern book outlines proposed improvements to Burntonob Road at the entrance to the quarry, which include an eastbound left turn lane and westbound deceleration lane into the property. Full designs, of course, would have to be completed and brought through the Planning Commission as a site plan should this application be approved. Quarries typically require to provide a Type 3 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. This is our thickest buffer. Average width is 50 feet, which can be reduced to 25 feet if they use a solid visual screen like a privacy fence or a berm or something like that. Plantings would also be required. Non-residential plan developments don't require any formal open space, but the applicant does state in the pattern book that they plan to provide a 500-foot preservation easement along with a 200-foot natural area and 100-foot wide berm between the quarrying mining vault and the property line, which would be a total of 400 feet. And this undisturbed area would also contain multiple trees, which can be counted toward their buffering requirements, and all this exceeds what the zoning ordinance would require for that type of a buffer. Of course, performance standards would apply. The applicant is well aware of that. I am not going to go through all the different measures that they've taken to reduce noise, vibration, everything. They're there in the staff report, and I'm sure that the applicant will speak more about this. Quarries, as we know, they're commonly referred to in the planning lingo as locally unwanted land uses, or LULUs, if you will. Most people, we realize, however, that this is a necessary part in any developing area. This quarry has been in existence since, again, 1985, and they have been operating it since 2000 and have made several upgrades since they've been operating it. If this application is not approved, activity at the quarry will not cease, probably for another 20 to 30 years based on discussions with the applicant team. There are ways to get rock deeper than what they're getting it now, it's just more, there's a lot more that goes into it than currently. So considering the difficulty in finding suitable land for a new quarry, staff feels that the expansion of the existing quarry would be more appropriate than trying to find a whole new location. And in staff's opinion, they're taking all the steps that they can to reduce their impact to the surrounding community. Again, there was a significant amount of information provided with this application. The applicant's team is present, they will be making a presentation, so with that, I'll just turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? The applicant available, or applicants, or however many would like to be involved in the presentation.
Well, thank you, Planning Commission. Thank you, Doug, for introducing us. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm Benny Pandorf with Roundtree and Associates. My partner Clyde Roundtree and myself are representing Rogers Group for this rezoning. So this is the team that we're going to have presenting this evening to you. Myself, I'm just going to go over kind of some zoning trends in the area, down the streets locally, and why we're here as an intro. Derek Roberts is going to talk a little bit about Rogers' history and the history of the quarry. Wyatt Currie is going to, he's our geologist, he's going to talk about the specific plans for this quarry. And then we have a group talking about the key issues. We've heard key issues, both from the neighborhood meeting and by talking to these commissioners as well as the county commissioners, we've heard those, and we're trying to address all those key issues. So Brian Carr, Clyde Roundtree, Matt Pills, and Eric Knowles will be addressing those key issues. Nick DiBarlow is going to talk about the economic impact of the quarry locally, as well as awards that Rogers Group has won. And then we'll turn it back over to Clyde for Q and A at the end. So why we're here is, so this is going from RM zoning to a PUD zoning. Doug's already referred to that. We're here to receive questions and try to provide as much answers to those questions, ones that we've already gotten and ones that we're here tonight. As Doug said, this is not a new quarry, it's existing. It's simply enlarging the pit on land that Rogers Group already owns. They've been acquiring land over years and years and years. And so they just want to acquire, they want to enlarge that pit to the west for 40 or 50 years of service to the local community. And as Wyatt will probably describe, it's a safer way to excavate and mine the rock is with a larger area than to go deeper, but one of the experts will explain that better. We did have a neighborhood meeting, June 2nd, and we heard those questions. We've taken those questions, we're still answering some of those questions, we've answered most of them. We also had some tours, some tours of the pit, to keep the public and the commissioners informed about the quarrying process. We do have a recommendation from Planning and Engineering. Joe Gurley, we talked to Joe Gurley, he is positive and supports the quarry as well. He is the district commissioner. And we think it's in the best interest of the county to have the quarry in its current location. Again, it's not a new quarry to be built somewhere else, but it's an existing quarry in a very good location for a quarry that simply wants to enlarge the pit. So this is my personal favorite slide because it has a baby on it, and everyone loves a baby. So all this slide tells us is that as far as natural resources, we as humans use about 3 million pounds in our lifetime. And what that means is it's not personal consumption or whatever, but it's what is needed, the resources that are needed for us to live. So it's not just my home, but it's the local grocery store or the power company, all these things, and all these different minerals are needed. So I think the interesting point on here is, if you look at the red square at the bottom, almost half of that 3 million is stone, sand, and gravel, which is what comes from a rock So the local trend down Burntonob Road is basically light industrial and commercial. It's not a heavy residential area, although there are residences around. But as you can see, going down Burntonob, light industrial all the way even the corridor of Veterans to 840 is mostly commercial. So I'm going to turn it over to Derek, who's going to talk about the history of Rogers Group, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name's Derek Roberts, I'm the Division Vice President for the Rogers Group. Before I talk about the quarry, I want to talk a little bit about Rogers Group, who we are, what we do. We've been in business since 1908, so 114 years now. Began in Bloomington, Indiana, by Ralph Rogers. Ralph had three grandsons who continued in the business. One stayed in Bloomington, one went to Louisville, and one came to Nashville. And they kind of operated three different businesses doing the same thing. And then in the early 1980s, they put it all back together and formed the Rogers Group, hired an outside board of directors and outside CEO, and made Nashville the headquarters. We operate about 70 quarries, 40 asphalt plants, and 11 states. Obviously, Tennessee is our biggest with about 30 quarries here in Tennessee. We've been in business for 114 years because we're very active in the communities. We play a big part in donating specifically to schools, to who our employees are involved with, ball teams, ballparks, anything we can to be involved in the community, we do that and want to be a good neighbor in the communities in which we operate. A little bit about the quarry. As you can see here, current capacity is about 2.2 million tons annually. That will fluctuate up and down with the current economic conditions. If we have a big project, it may go up. Certain years, that'll fluctuate down. Quarry serves in approximately 20-mile radius. The good thing about that is it becomes more cost restrictive to haul materials to a project the farther it is from the source. So a good thing about Middle Tennessee is we're fortunate to have a lot of rock. The building cost here in Middle Tennessee is very low as compared to, say, South Florida, where they have to rail in or ship in all their materials to build something. So very fortunate in that aspect. Typical operation is 6:00 AM to 6:30 Monday through Friday. That also fluctuates with the economic conditions. We just replaced a crusher a couple weeks ago, so we ran late to build up inventory to be able to service our customers while we were down replacing that crusher. Currently, we have about 20 employees on site. New target will be about 30 employees when we add the asphalt plant and ready-mix plant on site. And those will fluctuate again with the economic conditions of the local market. We've been pretty consistent, probably peaked in our sales volume in 2005, 2006. Hit the economic downturn 2008 through 2012, started picking back up, and we still not reached that peak that we saw in 2005, 2006. So I think we're right now, again, about that 2.2 million ton mark, and I think that will be a pretty consistent mark for us going forward. All right. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to Wyatt Currie and let him talk about the site plan. Thank you.
Like Derek said, my name's Wyatt Currie. I'm a geologist by education. My title with Rogers Group is Manager of Mine Planning and Geology. I know, I think you've got that on the iPads, I hope, because it's probably a little difficult from that distance. But what you'll see is the property boundaries. That's the property line in red there. That's the property that we've acquired either through lease or property ownership. And within those boundaries, my main role is to help Rogers Group create a quarry plan that abides by all of the regulations that we need to meet. So we're regulated by EMTSA, that's the Mine Safety and Health Administration. We're regulated by the EPA, we're regulated by TDEC. So I try to help make sure that we have a mine design that stays within all those regulations and we can be as productive and safe as possible. So up on the map, the primary features you'll see there is the big green berm. That's, the idea there is to have a vegetated berm that'll be all across the west side of the quarry. That'll help with, that along with the trees and the 100-foot, like, left-alone buffer, provides the 400 feet of vegetated space between the property line and the proposed quarry expansion. You see in the kind of the pink magenta color there, that'll be the location of the future asphalt plant and concrete plant. We think the benefit of that is that rather than having to take dump trucks that are loaded with gravel and have them leave the site, by having those facilities right there on site, that's going to allow us to take our materials right from the plant and put them right to the concrete plant and asphalt plant without putting those trucks on the road. So it'll decrease the overall truck traffic on the road while allowing us to send the trucks that do leave the facility will be more of a finished product. So you won't see the dump trucks with the loose gravel leaving the site as often. Most of that'll be processed on site. It was already slightly alluded to, but just wanted to hit the point one more time that the purpose of this, as we move to the west, you can see the current pit there and then the green berm will just be gradually moving the pit to the west. And by widening the pit that way, it just is going to help us keep the cost of production down, so that's going to keep the construction materials cost for roads and for the community, keep that as low as possible, and it just makes a safer working environment rather than having to take the pit deeper or even go underground. So it's a safer work environment, it's a cheaper way to extract the rock, and it allows us to meet all those safety regulations that we have with EMTSA. It's 50-plus years of reserves, so I think another good point about this site for a quarry is that it's kind of a solution, like, a solution for a generation, for all the construction materials, for all the concrete and aggregate that the community is going to need. This is not a Band-Aid, a short-term fix. It's 50-plus years, so this will be a solution that will make sure that we continue to have quality construction materials for a long time. With that, we've got some other key issues we want to go over, so I'm going to turn it over to Brian and let him go with some key issues.
Hello, my name is Brian Carr. I am a resident, been of Rutherford County, lived here all my life, other than nine years in the military. At Rogers Group, I'm the area production manager. I'm responsible for the operations at this quarry. What am I hitting here? Sorry about that. The key issues we're going to talk about tonight are dust control, I'm going to cover it. The next one's traffic, Clyde's going to cover it. I'll be back up and talk about property values and noise. And then Matt Pills, a vibration expert, is going to talk about the blasting and vibration, and then Eric Knowles will talk about the environment. Okay, one of the issues at any quarry is the dust control. We manage this, we have a wheel wash at the end of our truck scales, so every truck that gets ticketed goes across this wheel wash. It works very well. Now, there are times when water will continue to come out of the back of the bed and create track out for you residents that live on Burntonob. I know you've seen that. This wheel wash helps with that. It's not 100%, but we are going to make some changes when we do the, when we redo the road on Burntonob. We're going to redo our entrance, create a swell, and get all the water that drains down that road into a pond. I'll go to the next slide real quick. So that pond is located right at the entrance. So that pond is located right at the entrance. Also, on the plant, the dust suppression we have on the plants are the most modern there are. The plant we have there is fairly new, so it's the most updated equipment that's on the market. The dust suppression includes high-pressure water nozzles located at every transfer point where a conveyor dumps into a crusher or a screen. The crushers have water suppression as well. We've also got, on the screen towers, they're all enclosed on three sides. That also helps contain the dust, so I think we do a good job managing the dust on site. The next one we're going to talk about is traffic, so I'm going to turn it over to Clyde.
Hello, my name's Clyde Roundtree with Roundtree Associates, and I'm representing the Rogers Group, and specifically, I'm filling in for Bill Heslin from Heslin Steel, talking about the traffic report. But I wanted to let you know that traffic was a major concern among all the planning commissioners, as well as all the county commissioners. It's a concern throughout our county, so no one's unscathed without considering traffic. But I do want to make note that the reason, one of the reasons in 2007 that this application was pulled was because of traffic. At the time, Veterans Parkway was not connected to Burtonob Road, so that was a major consideration. They wanted to make sure that before we went forward this application, that the connection to Veterans was well in place, as well as 840 at the time was a fairly young corridor. Now it's becoming a pretty established corridor. So the results of having access to Veterans as well as access to 840, it's made this location even more valuable to them, because they can get to a lot of places from this location fast, that 20-mile radius they want to get to. With most of our situations, it seems like turn lanes and traffic lanes and D cell lanes are really a part of almost every project. In this case, that is what we're committing to. If this zoning is approved, at this point, we're committed to a right-hand turn deceleration lane. So as the trucks come closer to the plant, about to go in the driveway, they'll move off to the right, and that'll allow through traffic on Burtonob Road, which is a major consideration to keep traffic flowing at Burtonob, especially as the population grows out there. We want to make sure there's minimum opportunities for the trucks to slow down traffic, for people to complain about that. As far as on the other direction, if you're coming in from the west, heading east, going into the main drive, there'll be a turn lane, left-hand turn lane into the development, into our property. So between those two solutions, really the goal is to keep Burtonob flowing freely and smoothly. I'm not a traffic expert, but the traffic expert who did the report was very encouraged by what he saw, that because of these turn lanes, which are currently not there now, it'll allow the traffic on Burtonob Road to flow smoothly for a long time to come. So that was a major consideration, as Brian mentioned. With the new driveway getting expanded to receive that turn lane, the D cell lane on the right, there'll be a swell built in, which will continue to mitigate the migration of water that gets onto Burtonob Road. So we know Burtonob's a major concern, and we feel like this is a solution that will really help ease the pain of any development along Burtonob, and we feel like it'll affect the quarry's safety record and just encourage traffic to move smoothly. If there's specific questions about the traffic, I have the report with me, so I'll do my best to mine through that at the question-and-answer time. But I did want to represent what they were doing in terms of adding the turn lanes in order to make traffic more fluid and make it more safe.
Okay, the next issue we want to talk about is the perception of property values. That is a perception only. You know, nobody wants a quarry in their backyard. Doug's already mentioned about being the negative neighbor. Actually, that's not true. Property values do not go down because of a quarry. Most, in fact, many people you talk to would rather have a quarry as a neighbor as opposed to a Walmart or a shopping center or something like that. Yes, there's truck traffic, but the traffic for a quarry is much less than one of those others. There's been some studies over the last several decades that will prove what I'm saying. One of those studies actually included this particular quarry, that the property's values did not go down. In most cases, quarries are here before the subdivisions. Quarries start out in an agricultural area, and the subdivisions come closer and closer. That's true with this quarry, that's true in Gallatin, that's true in Hermitage. And if your house backs up to a quarry, what you're going to see is that vegetated buffer. So you're going to look out your back door and see woods, and it's several hundred feet before you even get to the activities of the quarry. And like has already been mentioned, we're proposing that buffer be 400 feet, 100 undisturbed, and then the other would be a berm that goes 20 or 30 feet high, so that'll protect from noise as well as visibility. All right, the next issue I want to bring up is the noise. Much of the noise around the quarry is the plant equipment and the haul trucks and loaders and things like that. We have our primary crusher in the pit, so it's down below surface level, plus that's where all the haul trucks come to, and that's where our largest loader is as well. So it being down in the pit will help neighbors to not hear, to prevent a lot of the noise. Plus, the buffer we're proposing, the berm around the property, will also decrease the noise. Another change we've made, nobody likes those loud beep-beep backup alarms. We have gone to EMTSA-approved, I call it a squawk box, but it makes a squawking noise instead of that loud penetrating beep-beep. It's still safe enough and can be heard by the workers around it, but yet it doesn't just penetrate through the air where the neighbors can hear it. Before I turn it over to Matt, one other thing that came out in the neighborhood meeting, it's not on the slide, was lighting. We do have night crews that work occasionally, night maintenance crews, and they have to have lights on, and the neighbors brought that up, and so we have redirected those lights so that they're not aimed out as much, they're aimed more down at the plant. And also, I'd like to say that if neighbors, if, you know, if it's not working, if there's something else you want to bring up, we're open anytime. Like has been said before, we've been here since 1985. We don't plan to go anywhere. We want to be the best possible neighbor we can be, so I'm glad to give anybody my business card. If anything comes up, we want to get to know you, we want to know what's going on, we want to be a good neighbor to you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Brian. My name is Matt Pills. I'm with a company called Vibrotech. And for those not familiar with Vibrotech, we are consultants for vibration and acoustics. Our company is old, not as old as Rogers Group. We started in 1949. We're a national company. We have 17 offices here in the United States. What I wanted to talk about tonight was really about three issues. I want to give everyone a little bit of background about the blasting process. We want to also talk about the regulations that govern both ground vibration and air over pressure from blasting episodes. And then finally, I want to share with you one year's worth of data here at the Rogers Group quarry. Looking at this diagram, this is just a typical bench diagram that you're going to see. You see vertical holes being drilled in that bench formation. Those holes are filled with explosives, and they're detonated one at a time. As human beings, we feel it as one event, but it's actually multiple holes being detonated in a sequence, in a series. That rock is then fragmented and taken off to be back to the plant to be crushed into smaller rock. The amazing process is that in the last 10 years, we've seen a lot of change with technology. So the blasting process has become very efficient. When I first started in the industry, 80% of the blasting material, the explosive material used on site was used to fracture the rock, 20% was waste. That waste is generated as ground vibration and air overpressure. Today, they actually use drone technology, and they fly over top of the bench. They model that with a 3D model. Then they design the blast with a computer, and then they actually put in a computer chip in each hole, and it's detonated very, just amazing precision. And so today, the blasting process, a well-designed blast is 97% efficient, 3% waste. And so that's just a great accomplishment here for the industry. What I wanted to talk a little bit about, the monitoring system that actually monitors the ground vibration and the air overpressure. This is a system, this is solar-powered. It's actually got a sensor, like a bobber, that's actually in the ground, sensing the ground vibration. It's also got a microphone. You can see that just underneath the solar panel, and that actually records the air overpressure. There's a small antenna on the system, and that information goes straight to my office. That information is also disseminated directly to the third-party contracting, the blasting contractor. He takes that information, they look at that, analyze it, and then they go ahead and design the next blast with all their technology. So it's a really wonderful feedback loop, blast after blast. What I want to do now is just switch gears a little bit and show you three locations. The Rogers Group has three monitors, one to the north, Brown's Chapel, one to the southeast, there next to the quarry, and one to the west, southwest on Burtonob Road. What I've done is go ahead and composited three, excuse me, one year's worth of data from these three locations, and put them on a graphic here that the state of Tennessee abides by. In essence, this is like a speed limit. If the data that we record, it falls underneath that red Z curve line, the probability that that blast episode impacted a structure is nil. And this is the most fragile part of a house. This is the drywall and the plaster. So you can see that their performance here this last year has been really good. And, you know, it's what I said before, is there's a feedback loop for the blasting contractor, and they, the Rogers Group wants to minimize this ground vibration because it's wasted energy. So as the neighbors, they want to have as low vibration as possible as well. So it's a really good system. I'll go ahead and turn this over now to Eric.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Eric Knowles. I'm Director of Environmental Services for Rogers Group. I am responsible environmentally for this location. Mining is an industry that's one of the more heavily regulated industries in the state of Tennessee. The EPA and the federal government have passed laws such as the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act that regulate this site in regards to air and water permits. Specifically for the air, we have a synthetic miner TDEC permit. That permit has a self-imposed limit to keep our emissions under 100 tons per year, which puts you into a Title V facility. That facility has a lot more reporting, and because of market demands at this location, we don't need it to be a Title V, so we have self-imposed restrictions on our quarry. We have restrictions on hourly throughput and annual production. So those are the two things that we keep records at the site, keep those things documented in case an inspection from TDEC were to happen. Wet suppression is the main, it's the main pollution control method, so it's nothing fancy, as Brian said, but we do have the, we do have a state-of-the-art system that as a new plant, it's actually built in and designed, because previous old plants, they kind of hang hoses around and they do the best they can. But this site specifically has a very good wet suppression system. And they also are required to do wet suppression inspections to make sure the wet suppression nozzles are flowing. That happens daily at this location. The permit requires it to be monthly, it actually is done daily. So we go above and beyond regulations at the site. We do also have a water permit that allows us to discharge processed water. We do have storm water that collects on the site in ponds and in the pit that we do have to discharge. Those outfalls are required to be monitored twice a month. So we monitor the outfalls. If we're pumping, we take samples of the discharges twice per month. Those samples get sent to a third-party lab, that lab tests the samples. The limits are very strict on the water permit, too. We haven't had any compliance issues here with any out-of-compliance samples, but they are tested twice per month, and we've got a good compliance record for this location. Our corporate environmental policy requires a site to be inspected for compliance twice a year. Our compliance inspection sheet is more rigorous than what the state has. We look at everything from spooling areas, berms, storm water control, treatment systems, those kind of things, to make sure that everything's working properly for the site to be not polluting the environment. Like Brian said, I'm also a resident of Rutherford County. I recently have moved back. I've been living in Rutherford County my whole life, went to school down, middle school down the road at McFadden Elementary, in middle school, and then I graduated from Blackman High. So this site, if, for those of you who don't know, is very close to Blackman High. And I take it personally, to be honest, when the site, when dealing with compliance here, because it does affect people that, you know, I went to school with, teachers, and both of my in-laws and my parents both lived very close there. So if you guys have any questions about the regulations, or, you know, you need to know anything more about the permits and what we do here, please feel free to ask when the time comes. So with that, I will pass it on to Nick.
Eric, thank you, commissioners in public. My name's Nick Di Bartolo. I'm the Area Vice President for Rogers Group. Just wanted to spend a couple of minutes talking about some of the economic impact, some of the jobs, and then some of the goodwill and community involvement that Rogers Group does. So you guys can see probably better on your iPad than you can see up here, but there's about 4,100 total jobs that are impacted by the Rutherford County quarry here. 250 or so of those are direct jobs, 30 of which would be Rogers Group employees relative to the quarry and future asphalt plant, but other truckers and vendors that day in and day out work at the quarry would be included in those. The rest of the other 4,100 jobs, or I guess, do the math, it's about 3,800, is downstream contractors, general contractors, site and utility contractors, other things around the quarry that we help sustain by being there. So, and these numbers are based on 70% of the aggregates, so we shot a little low that leave our quarry. On the tax front, about $1.2 million worth of taxes between sales, the 15 cent per ton severance tax, and the property taxes are covered by the 2.2 million tons of material that is taken out of this quarry annually. You know, I think one of the things that's worthy of pointing out here is, you know, as Brian mentioned, there is, there's little evidence that show that a quarry actually, you know, depreciates property, but one thing that it definitely helps is it keeps property taxes in check. We are able to put $1.2 million into the local government coffers for whatever is, choose to be done, whether it be road improvements or anything else, so. Some of the awards that Rogers Group has won over the years, you know, some of those in bronze are some of our other facilities, or in black are some of our other facilities. We actually just found out this morning that this quarry, the Rutherford Quarry, won NSSGA, which is the National Stone, Sand, and Gravel Association, won its highest award, which is the Gold Community Involvement Award. So we have a number of our benefactors in the office from various schools, the Boys and Girls Club, MTSU, that have all benefited from the benevolence of Rogers Group. And, you know, our employees live here. We've, we take it personally to make sure that the, that the life and welfare of our employees and the people around them that are important to them are supported by our business operations. So additionally, we've, at the Rutherford Quarry, we've, I think in 2020, won a Silver Award from NSSGA for environmental stewardship. So, you know, things relative to, as Eric mentioned, adhering to our more stringent corporate policies surrounding environmental than just what TDEC requires of us, but how we manage waste on site, which we consume almost everything that is pulled out of the ground, dust control, storm water suppression, how we manage any potential spills, you know, and then, and water management around us. So those are things that we're very proud of, and as you can see by this list up here, it's not just unique to the Rutherford Quarry. Rogers Group across a number of its mines in our 11-state footprint take this very seriously. So with that, I'd like to ask you all, if you have any... So with that, I'd like to ask you all if you have any questions, and I think Clyde will be coming back up and helping field those questions and direct them to the, to the experts as necessary. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask Clyde a question?
Yes.
Clyde, and I may have misread this as I was putting this staff report together, but it's actually two concrete plants and an asphalt? I had one concrete and one asphalt, is that correct?
It's, it's, it was going to be two. After the traffic study, we realized that that would be a little bit more of a burden than, than we're not needed, so we took the one off.
Okay, well...
Not to say that it won't happen in the future, but it's not a part of this plan development.
Okay, just for the future, then, if this continues on, can we amend the presentation?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Doug. So as Nick mentioned, I'm available for questions and answers at this point, or at least the question part, and do my best with answers. And obviously, before the public hearing, we're also more than willing to come up after the public hearing to respond to any questions the public may have. Are there any questions currently that you have for us?
Just one question. I noticed that, mentioned that there's quite a bit of water that's used as far as like cleaning the wheels and things of this type. Is that water recycled from any of the ponds, or is it water that comes from CUD or whatever?
I'll ask Brian to come up. Come on up, Brian. I actually know the answer, Pettis, but I'd rather the expert answer that one.
Yes, that water is recycled from ponds, yeah. And most of it drains to the pit, and we end up pumping it up to another pond and pump from there to the wheel wash.
Chairman, I have a question. Clyde, I'm going to ask Matt a question on the vibration.
All right, Matt.
The continued blasting in the base of the quarry, is it more likely to have more vibration than coming out on the shelf and starting a new area?
Yeah, great question. There is, you know, two types of blasting. One would be more of a production blast, which is going to be in more of the solid rock. And then there's also a stripping operation that happens on the upper level, and they get some of the waste rock off. Typically, you know, that, that quarry is shaped like a bowl, right? And so when you blast down low, a lot of that energy gets trapped inside in essence and kind of vents vertically. And so typically, I find that there's not many phone calls, or, or people typically don't perceive the blasting that's down low. The nice thing about this operation is that they are trying to expand to the west, and that's, the natural topography there grades up, and they talked about the berm and the buffer. That'll help with that stripping operation as they progress in that direction. Great question.
Clyde, is there blasting every day?
Right now, Jeff, currently the schedule is twice a week they blast, and that, that schedule shouldn't change, Brian? Is that, that can vary a little bit?
Yeah, that, that typically varies, but anywhere from once a week to three or four times a month. So, and occasionally, if, if we're in an area where we have to pull a small blast, we may blast twice that week. Typically, we've got enough production per blast to last at least a week.
Clyde, do you have anything else at this time?
No, thank, thank you, Chairman.
Stay close. Ready for our public hearing. This time I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 22-018 for the Rogers Group. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward.
I've been up here before. I live in Rutherford County. I have for, I guess, like 40, 50 years now. And I've got property on Stewart Creek Road. I was here in 2007, 2008, when the quarry had asked for rezoning then, and I'm here again because I'm against this. There's a couple of problems that I have with the quarry, and it's not the quarry specifically, but byproducts of the quarry. First thing is the gravel dust. I know there, Rogers is doing a great job of trying to mitigate that and get all the dust that they can off the trucks before they go out, but that doesn't take care of all of it. If you've ever ordered any gravel from Rogers Group, their delivery tickets on the back will tell you that the gravel dust is a carcinogen, and Webster's Dictionary will list that as a substance that causes cancer. I don't want that in my backyard. I don't want it in your backyard. I don't think you want it in your backyard. So I really don't think they should be expanding. In addition to the expanding, they're adding an asphalt plant and a concrete plant. That was kind of touched on, but they didn't say a whole lot about it. The other problem I have with the expansion is the blasting. They'll tell you what you're feeling isn't really the blasting from them, whether you're inside or you're outside, it is. I've got property on Stewart Creek, and it will rattle the inside of the house, that they'll tell you that it's something about the air and it's not really from the blast. Rutherford County's rock. If you live here, you know that. If you blast, you're going to feel it, because we can feel it inside and outside, which can't be explained by the phenomenon they talk about inside the house. Those are the two prob, main problems that I have with them expanding. And if you noticed, when they had their slide up about where the sensors are, the sensors aren't to the west where they're planning on the expansion, it's down to the southwest, and it's, I don't remember where the other two were. I think one was over by Brown's Chapel. I don't remember the other one. But there's not any to the west, so they can't tell you what it is. They can't tell you what you're going to be feeling. When I went through this last time, it, like I said, around 2008, when they had requested a zoning exemption or a zoning change, they had offered to put a sensor out in my yard. Well, that's great, but the experience I had back then, and I don't know if any of these guys were there then, the experience I had then, they would change their blasting schedule and the blasting intensity if they knew that a sensor was out being tested. And that's kind of sketchy to me. I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of what they're doing. I admire Rogers Group. If you look, I mean, they've got all sorts of accolades, and they really look good on paper, but is this really something we want to do on Burnt Knob Road? On Burnt Knob Road, they said it was either commercial or industrial. Have you ridden on Burnt Knob Road? It may be zoned, commercial or industrial, but there's a lot of homes. Within a mile, either direction of that entrance, how many homes are out there? Yeah, there's going to be a lot of impact, or, you know, a lot of tax dollars and a lot of benefit, but really, is it benefit to the residents? That's what I'm looking at. And there may be a lot of benefit to the county, but I'm really opposed to this, and I hope that you all vote against this, or at least do some delays and do diligent investigation as to what all is part of this expansion. They say that the trucks, there's going to be less trucks. How can there be less trucks if you're going to be taking those trucks to a concrete plant or an asphalt plant? Because asphalt plant and the concrete plant are going to have trucks. So really, does it not kind of wash out, or are there going to be more? I don't know how much product's coming out of the asphalt plant or the concrete plant. I'm sure that's my time, but that's my feeling. If you all got any questions, let me know, and I'm sure I've got a whole list of questions for Rogers Group. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I bought my 65 acres in 2002, and the back of my property touches parcel 00459 up there, and that's why I'm here. I didn't know there was a quarry when I bought my land. I moved from Memphis, so, you know. And I was out walking the land early and with the guy with the bulldozer who was doing my driveway, and the ground shook. And I thought, oh my, are we on the New Madrid Fault like we are in Memphis or what? And he said, no, it's the quarry. I said, okay. Well, the quarry was here before I was here, so I had no problems with the quarry as it was, okay? Except sometimes the blasting is a little excessive. I have been working from home since the pandemic hit, so I'm there during the day now, every day. One day, it shook the house for quite a few seconds. So I called up to the quarry to complain. I don't usually do that. And I got, I didn't, nobody was there except for the receptionist, and she took my concerns, and she said that they would call me back. I never got a call back. So Rogers needs to do a little bit better. I got your car, Brian, now, as far as customer service. Okay. And my concern is environmental, but not in the way of pollution. My property backs up to the knobs. Burnt Knob is one of them, that the road is named after. And there's grindstone knob and persimmon knob, and they're beautiful, but they must be in that 59 parcel. And my concern is, what are y'all going to do to those knobs? You know? Are they going to be just a buffer? That's fine, they're beautiful. My other environmental concern is the wildlife. I mean, I have deer, I have turkey, I have owls, I have peleaded woodpeckers, you know, fox, and coyotes. Coyotes have increased, the sightings of them around our houses up by the swimming pools since of all the residential, didn't have anything to do with y'all, but residential building they've been doing over there, like Pembroke Farms and stuff like that. So I'm concerned that you're going to be taking away a lot of the habitat of the wildlife, and they're going to be moving down to my property, and I don't really want coyotes on my property, believe it or not. So I, I just wanted to say that I'm against the expansion, obviously, but those are reasons why, and I think we should take into consideration that part of the environment, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Rutherford County for the last 17 years. I currently work in construction and have worked in quarrying as well. The main points that I've heard this evening are environmental impact, community involvement, and housekeeping. This company has been here since 1985. They don't expect to leave anytime soon. If I could consider a better neighbor, I don't think I could consider one. Seems like they're bending over backwards to try and answer and work with every neighbor that exists now, and I believe they will continue to do so. Your concerns are, are heard, they are being recognized. My last point would be, it seems like the major topic is housekeeping. Nobody is perfect, definitely not on a daily basis. When things get out of control, even in your own home environments, I believe that housekeeping kind of falls to the wayside. However, Rogers Group and their large company continually, continually tries to progress and work towards maintaining a high level of housekeeping. If you could consider anybody else to be your neighbor, I don't think you would find the consideration that Rogers Group is putting into this, so I would be for it. Thank you.
I have a lifelong resident of Blackman and Rogers Group, and being a member of the Community Club, we had about 20 years ago, some of their employees came and joined Community Club and worked with us about two years before they moved off. And that's when they got involved with the Blackman Community Club on the barbecue we had annually. And we've worked with them every year through 19 and whatever we need. They've been a, we've been a benefactor of theirs. And this, how I got into this today, tonight, is this spring, we was wanting with Rutherford County Conservation Department Recreation, we started wanting to build a pickleball court. Everybody laughed at us, couldn't get the money, called Rogers Group, and I gave them this idea. They didn't know what pickleball was either. But we wound up with a 100,000 tons of stone, and we'd have to pay $8,000 their cost for asphalt. So that got us started, and it's a good thing we did this year. We opened it on Memorial Day. So they've helped the community for 20 years. We've been there, and they have really improved, all with the technology and all the blasting and the dust. And one other thing, 20 years ago, talking about noise, it's 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, those trucks, you could hear them beep, 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 because I'm down below them. And one of them was over there one day, and I said, that's the worst thing y'all got up there. The beepers, and it run about a month later, they did calm them down. You don't, it don't disturb the cows or the hogs either. They're nice.
My name is Dr. Heather Brown, and I'm here really wearing two hats. First hat is I've spent 20 years as a college professor here at Middle Tennessee State. And really where Rogers Group and I came to know each other is they hire a lot of students out of MTSU directly in the concrete and construction industry. So a lot of jobs are staying local, and so when I recruit for programs like concrete and construction, it was really important to be able to tell Rutherford County kids, you can stay in Rutherford County, work, raise a family, and have really a stable career. Actually, one of my alumni is here tonight that works for Rogers Group. So just really full circle, it's been wonderful to have that relationship. They gave quarry tours every semester to our students. They provided summer jobs to our students that didn't necessarily want to go work full-time in the aggregate business, but wanted to learn more and wanted to be around construction materials. So for 20 years, I was able to send students to work with Rogers Group. And then last year, I turned over to the other side, and now I'm an end user of Rogers Group materials. So I work for a local concrete producer, Irving Materials, IMI, and they buy aggregate and manufactured sand from Rogers Group, from the Burnt Knob Quarry directly. We probably purchase around 10% of their 2.2 million tons, so quite a, quite a large end user of the material. And really what I want to mention there is I, one of my projects, I'm in charge of quality control, and one of my projects with IMI is to actually measure the impact of the environment that each of our concrete mixes have in the community. And one of the really important things when you think about producing concrete and asphalt is to buy local materials and buy materials that aren't trucked or hauled a long distance. So we actually have calculations now on acidification, eutrophication. We also have calculations for the CO2 emissions that's going into the air from the production of those aggregates, and then ultimately in the end product of asphalt and concrete. of those aggregates and then ultimately in the end product of asphalt and concrete. And so buying local and having something shipped or hauled in a short distance impacts that output, impacts those values. And so we really look to buy that local material. And because this quarry is an expansion and not an increase in production, we'll be able to do that for a longer period of time. So we'll be able to both place our local students into jobs for a longer period of time and produce low embodied carbon material, low embodied carbon asphalt and low embodied carbon concrete, which is going to ultimately help the environment all over Rutherford County, not just right near the quarry. So I feel there's a lot of impact here, economy impact, economical impact, livelihood of families and, and local MTSU graduates that can make careers. And then ultimately, we are actually seeing a lower embodied carbon footprint for Rutherford County because of that local production of the materials. Thank you.
I can certainly promise you I'm not gonna be as articulate as she was. I'm just a little guy that's been building houses here and been in construction in Rutherford County since 1985. I've been buying their products since 1985. I've earned a living. They're not the only game in town. There's quarries all over town. And I, I personally work every day as a contractor. I drive a dump truck most two or three times a day, two or three times a week. I haul my own gravel. I go to lots of different gravel pits and this is by far the most community-friendly quarry that I ever drive my truck into, okay? They give back to the community. We're paying 15 cents a ton. Tax that comes back to the county, I think somebody told me that it was like a $300,000 a year, just on that 15 cents a ton comes back to Rutherford County. Now, I don't live near it, but I will tell you this. I live, I've lived in Walter Hill for 38 years, okay? And long about early 90s, they brought one of these things into my neighborhood that we don't like. And all of your trash comes to my neighborhood every day. And they are not good neighbors. There's trash, there's stink, there's dust, there's mud, there's dirt. But that's the home I built for my family and I'm not leaving it, okay? And, and I can't stress to you enough how good these people are about working with the community and what they're doing to keep things better. I even told them the other day at their, their barbecue that I really like coming there because that's the only quarry I get to go to where they wash my truck when I leave. So, and it, that for me, too, is when they're, when they're cleaning that truck with, with the water and there's, there's also ripples in there that, that shake the truck, shakes the, shakes the bed down so that the gravel's not falling off the bed, nobody else does that. It cleans the truck off, takes the dust and what gravel's hanging in my wheels and tires comes off, okay? For me, when I get out on the road, that's a benefit to me because if I knock your windshield out, you're gonna chase me down and my insurance is getting bigger all the time. I enjoy going to their place. I just can't stress to you enough that there's a lot of other quarries and I think you should go see them. And if you don't like quarries, come out and see that mountain that they built. That's a big hole in the ground you can't see from the road. Well, we have a big mountain in Walter Hill that's growing every day and it's, so I, I feel your pain, but I can't tell you enough, these guys are first class. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name's Jeff Keener. I'm superintendent with Rogers Group. I'm Hillsboro, McMinnville, Shelbyville Quarries. The reason I'm here tonight on this quarry is I'm, my neighbor, I back up to this quarry. The seismograph is in my yard, so I know what kind of vibrations and, you know, I don't think, I get a reading on it. I don't think we've ever had one that was above the tolerance. There's dust monitor in my yard. We have farm animals, my wife, grandkids is there. You know, if it was something that wouldn't safe, we definitely wouldn't live on the backside of a quarry. But I've been in mine in over 20 years. Been with Rogers Group for five years. I can tell you this company here at all of our locations, we go above and beyond as far as environmental, all the laws. Rogers Group's a wonderful company to work for. As far as the wildlife, you know, I got pictures of deer in my yard, turkey. We've got all the small game. That's one of the great things about rock quarries is the property around them. It's a wildlife habitat game land for them. So I'd just like to say there's a lot of benefits to this expansion. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Ben Codill and I'm the head football coach at Stewart's Creek High School and serve many of our student athletes that live off of Burtonob Road, one of the fastest growing school zones in the entire state, which will service about 2,400 students this fall. I'd like to make a comment, address a comment earlier made about what this will do to the residents and our community. I can assure you, since I've become our head coach the last two or three years, it has been a very, very hard time to raise money for the various things that need to be done within public schools. We've had limited attendance at home football games. When a game gets shut down due to COVID, which we certainly have had happen twice, you lose the concession revenue as well. And I can just say this, you would be hard pressed to find a company in this county that has serviced the construction needs more so than Rogers Group. Some might say that just is for a slide on a PowerPoint. I can assure you, at our first golf tournament, Rogers Group agreed to sponsor two teams and there was a conflict on the date after they committed to do it. They still paid for the two teams in full, even though they couldn't make it. And to me, I think they are an incredible example of servant leadership. They answer the call when the phone rings. And that's at a time when many companies find it easy at a cash-strapped time to not step up. And I can say from the job that I do every day, they have also stepped up in, in the rock needs for our new turf football field. And that is something that will literally impact from the youth level all the way up to high school band competitions. And I could not imagine a better neighbor right in the backyard of one of the hottest real estate markets in the state. And I would find zero truth in anybody moving into our school zone as fast as it's growing. I think that certainly speaks to the neighbor that Rogers Group is and can't say enough about the neighbors. They are servicing the student athletes at Stewart's Creek. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Daniel Queen. We own the property directly south and east of Burnt Knob, or the quarry. We're at 5907 Burnt Knob, probably one of their closest neighbors here. Yes, I've felt the shots, I've heard them. They're a quarry, but it's, it's, to me, it just does not seem that bad. I'm, I'm usually in the office every day and 80% of the time, I forget I'm next to a rock quarry. And then all of a sudden, you'll be like, "Oh, heard that, felt that, it's minor." You know, I'd, I'd also be lying if I said that, that I saw their wash truck more than I saw the dump trucks coming and out, but I see it. I see it often. I think they do a really good job taking care of the road. They know there's a traffic problem. I'm really glad to see them installing the turn lanes. I think they've, they've done a good job mitigating the expansion and they're gonna keep operating out of there. I mean, they've been there longer than, I mean, we've only been there a year. I mean, we're the newcomer. We picked it partly because there was a quarry there. You know, it's, it's an industrial area. So that's kind of why we picked the spot. We figured it'd be out of the way. Residents are moving out. They're buy, they buy up the homes as they become available. So I think as time goes on, you will see less problems running into residents instead of more so. And I mean, everybody needs rock. It's in the roads, it's in our foundations, and it's gotta be mined from somewhere. You might as well just expand one you've already got instead of shuttling the problem down to somebody else miles away. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You need to wait, you need to wait until everyone else has spoken. I'll allow you to come back up. Anyone else? We all through and all done? Jerome? Sorry.
All right. I agree. Rogers Company, or Rogers Group is a good company. I mean, everybody that spoke about them had good things to say about them. But that's not what, what's up for debate or vote tonight. What's up for vote tonight is the rock quarry, the rock quarry expanding. And nobody at Rogers Group said that the quarry would close down or go away if it did not expand. Back in the 2002, 2007, 2008 rezoning request, they had said there was a life expectancy to the quarry. So they've still got that if they don't expand. This is a request to expand, not a request to accept Rogers Group. They're a good company. I've seen it, saw it up here. They had a lot of people here to say they, good things about them. I'm just really passionate about this because I don't want that buddied up against my back property line. And again, I hope you all do due diligence and research this more and not just push this through and approve it to the next council meeting. Thank you.
Last call.
Just real quickly, I've wrote down a few of the questions and I think we can answer a few of those tonight while everyone's still here, the experts are available. Eric, could you come up and speak about dust? That was one that came up as far as the particular matter and the part of the, being a carcinogen. I think that's a real concern and just do your best to kind of help her understand that. And then Matt, if you can put yourself online for blasting and where that sensor's located, because it's, it's a good question, whether it's not located to the west and maybe something we can do about that, so.
Yeah, so as far as the dust goes with the carcinogen, that's not in any TDEC regs. It's not in the permit as being a, you know, any material that causes cancer. If there was any concern with the, with the rock dust, I think people probably wouldn't have gravel driveways or gravel roads for that matter. So as far as the permit goes, you know, there's nothing governing that from all the state experts, from the EPA experts, you know, nothing that I've heard that gives kind of that information, so.
There was the question about where the monitors were placed. One of the things you have to understand about ground vibration, it's, it's very similar to if you took a rock and you drop it in a pool of water. And the waves that you see when you do something like that is very, the bigger waves are closer to the source and as you move further and further away, that vibration attenuates with distance. So those monitors that you saw on that slide, they're placed strategically because they want to be closest to the, closest non-owned structure. If we know what the vibration level is there, we're gonna know that it's gonna be less further out. To answer the question about the location to the west, I know that Derek at that church meeting mentioned about putting a monitor to the western area and that's something that, that he was offered to do and something we can do. With the readings that we have, we're able to project what those readings are further out and a monitor would confirm those projections.
And I'd just like to wrap up that as far as Rogers not calling back in regards to a question or concern that you had, that's new information. Everything we've heard, they've been very responsive to any concerns that the neighbors had, so I'm glad you got Brian's phone number. He'll respond to that. With that in mind, I just want to say Joe Gurley is very much in support of this project. We've met with Joe, he's been, and he's been here for eight years and Rogers have been in his backyard. And we asked Joe how they've responded to concerns. He said, "I didn't have a lot of concerns." Joe's had one complaint over eight years from Rogers Group and, and they responded to that. So I think their track record is, is very positive in terms of their responsiveness to the neighbors. And there was one other question I, one of the commissioners asked me about future access points, really Chip is one of your questions, and I did ask him about that, whether there be any access point to the north. The expansion of the project, and really I want to explain to you, this is expansion. What this allows us to have is a quarry in an existing location for the next 50 years. That's what we're asking for. It allows them to service that 20, 20 mile radius that's growing in a very effective manner. It keeps materials costs down. So we, we want to stay at this location because of Access State 40, because of all the things that we've mentioned already. But as far as to the north, Chip, there won't be any expansion from a driveway for any kind of major access point. So just want to let you know that as well. If there are any of the questions, I'd be glad to answer them offline. I know we've taken a lot of time tonight, but thank you for being patient with us.
And I'll declare the public here enclosed.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Bear with me for a second because I've got a lot of notes and this is gonna take some time and some people may want to answer some questions. But the first thing is, Doug, does this PUD, as it's submitted, I know it's for rezoning, but everything that's written in this pattern book, if we approve it tonight, is technically approved, correct?
That's correct. Now, that doesn't mean that they still don't have to do site plans and things like that.
Correct, correct.
But the actual zoning, the land use that they're asking for would be granted if it's, well, if it's approved ultimately by the county commission. Remember, we're just a recommending body here, but yes.
Is this currently operating as a quarry only?
Yes.
Okay. Because I've also been in the industry for 23-plus years and I've been an expert to be at planning commission meetings and to be in certain elements of this. And it is a significant change in business plan to add a concrete plant, an asphalt plant. This is not simply an expansion of a quarry, which I support. I support the expansion of the quarry, but the way it's presented, that, that's a significant business change. I've been involved in that. I mean, you're talking about complete setups of a concrete plant with concrete trucks coming and going, asphalt plant trucks coming and going to take mix out and, and the state now requires nighttime paving only. So you're gonna have these operate in all hours of the night from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM or whatever those projects they win. And I, and they're a great company, don't get me wrong. I've dealt with them over the years and there are great people there and it's a great company. But as this is presented, this is not simply a quarry expansion. This is a significant change in operations and a significant impact to that community. And I, I've gotta have more time to digest how many ton, what tonnage of plant are you gonna put in for the asphalt? What cubic yardage are you planning on producing for the concrete? These are significant questions that need to be answered, in my opinion. And that's, that's that's where I'm at with this project tonight. I mean, it's, you're talking about the, like I said, the haul trucks, the, the elements of this PUD, I mean, if it was simply the quarry expansion, I support it. I mean, because it's, it's right there in the community, it's right here locally, they've done great over the years, but the, this is significant changes. That's, that's my opinion. And I may chime in some more as my thoughts come back to me some more, so, thank you.
Clyde, can you speak to his concerns, or anybody there speak to the concerns?
Yeah, I'll do my best to speak to that. We're, we are proposing to add a concrete plant and an asphalt plant. Typically, those things are off-site, which means the, the dump trucks have to leave our quarry and go to those. Industry-wide, the best place to have a concrete or an asphalt plant is right next door to the quarry, because it does cut down on that dump truck traffic. Yes, there, it is kind of a wash, because you will have asphalt plant trucks coming out. It is a little different business, but it's very, very similar. In fact, they're considered ancillary to a, to a quarry, and if you don't have them on-site, you're going to have them off-site somewhere, which means you've got to have another area that's, that's own industrial or whatever. So, actually, we think it's a better proposal bringing those into our site.
I'll give you some time to think, Lee. I'll tell some jokes or something, okay? I am looking at my notes from April of 2008, and we actually had a busy agenda those couple of months, because right before that, we talked about the Bible Park. Half of us were here during those times. That was quite a controversial discussion. And then we came to the quarry, and I have about four pages of notes, and I see that the big issues were traffic on Burnt Knob, dust, noise, water, hours of operation, night blasting, and then I see then that they pulled, in the May meeting, they withdrew. So, a lot of the things that we talked about tonight, we did talk about in 2008. However, the traffic issue has been solved for the most part because of the 840 opening and the connectivity to that. We all know that rock, sand, gravel is used, we may not appreciate it, you may not even acknowledge it, but we use it every day. The house we live in has got stone and rock in it. The brick you make has got sand in it. The block your commercial office is made out of is, also comes from a quarry such as this. Greg Brooks uses it. He couldn't, his job wouldn't be needed without it for asphalt paving. Our interstates have to have it. Everything has to have it. It is one of the top three building materials in the world. It's in a good spot right now. They're asking for expansion. When they, when they're, if and when their limits of stone are at their end, where are we going to cite another one? How many, how many meetings and how many pages of notes is somebody like me going to make in a decade from now? Rogers Group's been around for over 100 years, in all phases of construction, highway building, asphalt plants, quarries. You don't stick around for 104 years without doing some things right and learning from your mistakes. So, I, I am comfortable with making a motion to approve. Lee, I, I do agree, and you brought up some great points about the addition to, of a concrete plant, asphalt plant, is certainly a addition to a business model, which I don't really have a lot of heartburn about, other than the comment you made about evening asphalt or night asphalt demand. But, one thing I had in my notes from 2008 was that the need for aggregate is also 24/7, 24 hours a day. So they're dealing with that right now. So I, I'm comfortable with going ahead and making a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Is that you? We've got a motion and a second to approve.
Mr. Chair, can I interject something here to go along with his motion? I'm not, I'm not going to change it, but...
Let me, let me finish. We've got a motion and a second to approve. Now comments.
Thank you, sir. I spent a lot of time on that, in that Burnt Knob Road area before Rogers owned that. We may not remember, I believe it was Stone Man or something before that, and, so I, I did see it change ownerships, and I did also see a big difference as the years went by, how the quarry progressed to be a better neighborhood, much less dust. They, they put up the traffic speed monitors to try to keep the trucks under control, and it just, it just worked out better, and, you know, we're, we're, we have to plan for the future here, and I think it's the best thing to keep the quarry there.
I want to make clear that I do support the expansion of the quarry, and the company itself is top-notch in the community. But I, the operations of a quarry added with the operations of an asphalt plant and a concrete plant that only show up as a bubble on an image, without a lot of what footprint are they going to have, what tonnage production, what cubic yardage of production? There's labs associated with that for testing. It's, it's more significant operation than just a bubble on an image. And as it sits right now, I, I don't think we've been presented with a quarry expansion alone, and there's going to be significant impact with traffic, come-and-go dump trucks to, to service those, the, the concrete trucks. I don't mind supporting it if there was more information involved with it. I can get behind it. I think it services the community, but as it's written right now, as a bullet, an arrow, and a blurb, or a shaded area, I can't support it at, at that level. And that's where I stand now, and I, I agree with everything Commissioner Kuss said, that, you know, it's, it's benefit to the community, and I, I can support it as a quarry expansion, but I cannot, in good faith, support it as it stands now without more information. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will not be voting on this issue. Abstain.
Sorry?
Abstain from voting.
Mr. Chairman.
Marvin.
Question, I, I read the notes that Doug sent us on this, and it's here in front of us, and I didn't think about it until Lee started talking about it a minute ago, but the notes that were presented to us does not mention a concrete plant or a asphalt plant. Does, does that in any way reflect what we can decide on tonight, since we weren't informed of the plants until their presentation?
Actually, Mr. Whitworth, in the staff comments under background proposal details, in that first paragraph where it says background proposed use, I do mention it in there, that there is a concrete plant, an asphalt plant associated with that. If they just kind of sprung this on us and said, "Oh, by the way, this is what we're going to do," I would say, yeah, there's, there's, there's a little more information. Yeah. Thank you.
And it was, and, and I agree, they are more efficient having all that together. I just, there's just not enough information there, for me.
Other comments?
Of course, I've always got something to say. Lee, I hear what you're saying, I think that was my initial reaction too, but then when I thought about loading a truck with gravel or whatever, sand, whatever raw materials they need, then hauling them across town, processing them there, and then putting them back on a truck and hauling them back across town again, and I thought the mileage, and, and the resources involved, and just, just move, just beating our roads to death, doing that back-and-forth thing, just didn't make as much sense as, as keeping it on-site. And, and so that's kind of swayed me to change my thoughts on it.
Anyone else? Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ 22-018 for the Rogers Group. Any other questions or comments? Call those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Record shows there was one no. Motion carries. Thank you. Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B4, we need a break. Take five. I'll call the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission back to order, and we'll get right back to our agenda. Item 6B4, the item number is REZ 22-014, Dustin Estates for SFG Murfreesboro. Location is Sulphur Springs Road, Commission District is 3, the County Commissioner is Michael Rather. The size of the prox, the size of the site is approximately 157 acres, the tax map is 48 and 57. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. The proposed zoning is a PUD for planned unit development, and this is for an industrial development. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm, you've got your staff comments in your agenda packets. I'm not going to go through the entire presentation that I have there, simply because a lot of this was already hashed out last month. What I'm going to do, though, is hit the high points and try to, you know, be happy to answer any questions, obviously, about anything in this report, but I know that the applicant has a presentation here, and I'll probably hit some of the high points on that as well. But, as you recall, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this back on May 9th. That application was deferred to allow the applicant an opportunity to address traffic, drainage concerns that were raised during that public hearing, and these concerns are expanded in the staff report, and, as I said, I'm just going to kind of give you an overview of that. As you all recall, the curtain pattern book that they are proposing had two buildings on the site, largest was about 1.1 million square feet, and the smaller was about 260,000 square feet. One of the issues that they were dealing with on this property had to do with the location of an existing TVA easement that goes through the property. They have been in regular communications with TVA, you actually have an email that's part of your staff comments, that they received from them just within the last few weeks regarding the location of that. They've got a, a more firm location, and because of that, had to make some changes to the pattern book. The building two, building one really isn't affected by the, the easement location. Building two currently is being shown as about 223,000 square feet. This was originally shown as about 260,000 square feet, so it is a reduction. However, the applicant did feel that they might be able to get some additional square footage out of it, depending on the final layout and everything of the easement. So basically, what I instructed them to do at that point is, if you think it's going to be larger than that, or may possibly be larger than that, ask for as big as you could possibly make it, that you would like to make it at least, and that way, if, if it turns out that it can be larger, then you don't have to come back through with an amendment. So what you see on there, again, there is drawn, it's about 223, 222,000 square feet roughly, but they do show it going possibly up to 373,000, which is larger than what they were proposing originally, but again, a lot of that's going to depend on the final determination of that easement, although it's more locked down than it was in the past. Some of the other major issues, excuse me, that we addressed and talked about during that last meeting had to do, of course, with traffic in the roads in the area. This is something we were, I mean, quite frankly, concerned about since the beginning of evaluating this proposal, even a couple of years back. The applicant has stated that they are making improvements along Sulphur Springs Road to facilitate traffic, especially tractor-trailer traffic into the property. However, staff still did have concerns about the backups that currently experienced along Sulphur Springs Road, especially from I-840 to the three-way stop at Leanna Road in Sulphur Springs. After discussing these concerns further with the development team, they have agreed to design and install a traffic signal at that three-way stop sign, which is just on the other side of the interstate. We feel that, staff feels that the stop condition for eastbound traffic along Sulphur Springs Road currently is one of the primary causes for those backups, especially during the peak times. This light would be programmed to allow eastbound and westbound traffic to free, free flow, excuse me, through that intersection, and would only change when somebody going northbound on Sulphur Springs Road was looking to turn, like Mike is demonstrating there, going toward 840. So that's one of the major changes that you do see with this particular application. Something else that was brought up had to do with the truck traffic possibly turning left on the Sulphur Springs Road. The applicant will probably get into this in a little more detail, but in your pattern book, you'll see that they've kind of redesigned the entrance into the site and the exit into, off the site, to, you know, essentially discourage trucks from making that left turn. They have raised medians in there, I don't know if we can pull it up quick, but again, they'll probably discuss it a little further when, when they come up here to talk. Mike's going to bring it up here in just a second. Here we go. You can see they've got raised medians here, and then, and then that area right there, which is, due to the size of the trucks and the way that that is, the geometry of that is, is done, it's going to discourage larger truck traffic from turning left, and there's kind of a, just a schematic of it, of how it would look in that, kind of that layout right there. There's also going to be signage there directing the trucks to go toward 840. Also, you'll recall at the last meeting, our Highway Superintendent came up and discussed the Anisus Mill Bridge and the issues that we're having there, and the weight limitation he's placed on that. So all that together, you know, should hopefully discourage most of the truck, if not all of it, from turning left on the Sulphur Springs Road, but to head back toward 840, which is where the majority, if not all of it, should be going in the first place. Drainage is also something they discussed. I'll let Mike get into that in a little more detail. Like I said earlier, I think the applicant's going to have some more, some more of a presentation on that. I know we discussed that quite a bit at the last meeting. They've done a, a lot more work as far as additional bores onto the property, as far as, you know, not hitting any groundwater, those kind of things. Also, showing that the amount of blasting that they may have to do on that property isn't as much as they originally had thought. But, Mike, I'll turn it over to you for any drainage-related issues here in just a second. But, those are kind of the, the high points. I will say also that for landscaping, they have made, of course, you see the, the amount of, and 150-foot buffers that they have around most of the property. They have added some additional detention, again, Michael discussed that in a little bit, and they are proposing a 12-foot wall over there at the very front of the property between the adjacent property right to the west and also the subject property. I will say that, similar to what we discussed under the rock quarries application, the buffering that they are proposing is more, significantly more than what would be required if the properties were zoned either heavy or light industrial. At this point, I guess I'll turn it over to Mike for any comments on the drainage.
Well, thank you, Doug. Yes, we did meet with the design team and talked over the proposed drainage plan, and what we've asked them to do is go above and beyond any place that you could find to put additional stormwater management areas, and that's what they've done. In a couple of places, they've added this long linear one here, this smaller one here, but they've also addressed the, the concept that these areas can expand. Instead of going down, they can go out. They've got a, a large area that they can massage their stormwater management area, and I don't want to steal their thunder, their presentation, but they have a very good design engineer working on this stormwater plan. I'm feeling a lot better than I did... better than I did previous engineers. They wanted to use a stormwater pump and force main and send it different directions. But this area, I think what they'll do is design ponds that will be volume sensitive, hold back the stormwater volume above and beyond what they're generating before it is released in its normal path. But I'll let the design team address that some more. So I do feel better about the stormwater plan. The intersection Doug mentioned at Leanna and Sulphur Springs, I've got a short video, drone video, if I could play that real quick. This was my concern last time. If I can find that. So I asked the Office of Information Technology, our GIS department to, we have some drones in the county, and we asked them to fly this, my mouse will operate. Come on now. About a second ago. There it is. For some reason, I can't see it on my screen. Well, come on now. Gremlins are operating. See it off in the edge, then it disappears. All right, I'm going to try something different. Come on now. I guess the computer got tired and doesn't want to operate anymore. But what I was going to say is that traffic, the drone footage, if I could get it to play, shows traffic backing up from this three-way intersection all the way to the interchange. Traffic also starts to back up on the ramp coming towards Sulphur Springs, northbound, getting off 840 and coming to this interchange. So that was one of my big concerns, was to address this with additional semi-tractor trailer traffic being introduced to the area. If I could get this to play, you can see that the people that use this three-way intersection are doing a, not even coming to a full stop. They're just slowing down, doing a California stop and roll, you know. So if they actually had people following the traffic laws, that this would back up even farther into the interchange and could cause additional problems. So with, our thought was to allow free flow of traffic down Sulphur Springs, and then once it crosses that three-way, it becomes Leanna. And that's where most of the traffic is going. So when there's a northbound car wanting to turn left to go back to the interstate, the traffic signal would trigger and allow the free flow of traffic to stop and allow those turning movements. Apparently, the gremlins have been at work.
Hey, Mike, was most of that traffic that you witnessed turning right on Sulphur Springs?
They were going straight and going east on Leanna. Sometimes when you remote in, it only can handle so much data, and I think that's what's happened. What I'll do if I can get this thing to break my remote connection and then try to log back in again. Apologies on this. Technology is wonderful when it works and not so much when it doesn't. Okay. Well, we're just going to have to back up and punt. Broke it. So with the proposed turn lane improvements that they're planning to do on Sulphur Springs, their own site, and the traffic signal that they'll be installing at Sulphur Springs and Leanna, I feel better about the traffic situation. So they still have a lot of work to do, design work. They still have a lot of construction work that'll go along with the project if it is approved. So they have addressed that situation with Okay. All right. So what we'll have to do for our maps, we'll have to just go to our generic GIS. Again, apologies. This was working fine earlier. I guess it just, it's past its bedtime or something. Well. Act again, but it doesn't seem like it's going to work. Lot of luck. Still a lot of luck. But we have the PowerPoints available if they suggest that. These should work, yes. I hope. Thank you, Danny. But take my word for it, traffic does back up from that intersection to the interchange. And that was my concern, that if people had actually come to full stop, looked both ways, continue on, the backlog would be even worse than it is. But most people from the area know they just slow down and go on through. So anyway, I'm sorry. How about technical difficulties?
Water issues you're through discussing?
I'm feeling better. They've got one of the best local engineers in the state working on that. And I feel comfortable that this project will not move ahead until we see that we are not going to be impacting the area any worse than it is. I mean, it's, we're not going to be able to solve the problems, but they have enough room to hold back the water on their own site that it won't increase the problems.
Any questions for staff at this time? The applicant here would like to make your present, come up and make your presentation, if you would. While they're coming up, let me make a quick comment. Mr. Christensen, if you would, look over my shoulder tonight. I had a complaint at our last meeting that I did not follow Robert's Rules of Orders to the T. So you make sure I do that tonight and I don't vary from Robert's Rules of Order. So you're up.
Thank you. Thank you all for the time. I know it's late. We'll try to recap and go as quick as we can. So a lot of these details have gone. But my name is Kendall Barrett. I'm a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. I'm one of five owners of the property that we're talking about. We each purchased the property over 20 years ago as an investment, knowing that the 840 interchange there had potential for more than the land that it was. Our initial step, so recently, several years ago, we decided that it was time for us to begin looking into the development of the property. Our initial step was to evaluate the highest and best use of the property. And based on the site features, the location, benefits to the county, impact to the community, and the site construction impacts, we pursued light industrial. We've reviewed residential uses. We've reviewed a lot of commercial and other activities there. And from all those, we pursued the light industrial. As you know, through a three-year process, we've taken the commissions, the county personnel, and community concerns from each of the meetings to kind of refine the appropriate use for the land and to come to the detail that's in our PUD plan today. During this time, we've also worked with multiple potential end users, looking at those through, whether it's residential, private schools, different things. And we filtered through those applications to make our selection of Stonemont Financial Group because of their commitment to the community. They're a landowner in Rutherford County, already have developments here. The commitment to the use of the property with its best use, looking at being able to leave green space and working in the areas that, and buffering for the neighborhood, and just looking at the project's best interest on a whole. Right now, I'm going to introduce Dustin Estes. He's the Senior Vice President of Stonemont. He's going to review the concerns that have been mentioned at each of these meetings, the community hearings, and from these hearings. And he will present to you the information that we've gathered as far as to answer those questions. And he'll also introduce some of the engineering support that we have for each of those details through the presentation. And if you have any questions during any of it, we're all available. Thank you.
Thanks, Kendall. Again, I'm Dustin Estes with Stonemont Financial Group. We are a, just as a reminder, we're a commercial real estate investment group and industrial developer based in Atlanta, headquartered in Atlanta. We specialize developing here in the southeast. We have roughly 17 million feet in development around the country. We've done a lot here in the state of Tennessee. We currently have a 700,000 footer under construction in Portland, Tennessee. And as Kendall mentioned, we are building owners. We're property owners here in Rutherford County and landlords for a couple larger groups here, one of them being a proposed tenant for the bigger building that you'll, that we'll talk about here. I'm going to focus, instead of rehashing everything that we've talked about, it's late, I'm going to try to focus on mostly what we heard last meeting, what we've done to kind of answer those questions between last meeting and today. And we'll move just as quickly as we can. I just want to thank the commissioners, thank staff for your patience and listening and working with us, and thank the residents, those who are in support of us, and others who are here. I know it's been a long, rigorous campaign here. I'm mostly appreciative, though, of, it has come to my attention, there's a Facebook page that's out there, community Facebook page. They put a picture of me on there. Thank goodness, they used a picture of me from about six years ago when I had a full beard. I was super handsome. And that was, I'm appreciative of that. That was kind of you. Other than that, not a lot of good things on there. But, okay. First, let me, let me just tell you that we're going to focus here in this meeting, talking about the rezone, what's the highest and best use of this property, why residential isn't a great zoning for this property, and why, you know, this PUD and our light industrial would be. I want to tell you that everything that you'll see in our presentation today, none of it was just Stonemont or the sellers working in a vacuum. It was, we met with staff, we bounced every, we were fully transparent. We bounced all of our questions off staff. We worked with them. And everything that they proposed and everything that they were concerned with, we tried to listen to and tried to rectify. And that's where we stand today. What you'll hear today is the following. We'll talk through the site plan as it stands today and kind of the buffering in that site plan. We'll talk through traffic and some of the TDOT concerns. And Peter Schmidt, our traffic engineer, will talk through those along with myself. We'll talk through, obviously, the underground water issues. And our engineer, our underground water engineer, Mark Lee, will come up and talk a little bit about detention and what we've tried to do there. We, along with myself, will present the rest of the material. And at the end here, we have some letters of support of some community members who aren't here today. And our Sarah Leducky will read those. And then Sean Henry, our land use attorney, will close up. And then I'll take any questions that you might have, and we'll try to move just as quickly as we can. Let me make sure this is, is this working? It's working. Okay. I'm going to just, I'm skipping over some slides because it's stuff you've already seen. And we can always backtrack if you have questions. But I'm going to focus on what's most important here. As Doug mentioned, you'll see in that candy cane, kind of that red dash there, where the TVA stands today. I'm going to talk about it at the end of our presentation here, but we do have preliminary approval on this location from TVA. We have the email in there. They've been communicating with us, and we feel very confident in this location. Our footprint, I know Chairman and some others brought up the size of our footprint. Our footprint did shrink a little bit by 40,000 feet. I don't see it. Yes, we do have the option and possibly could grow with in-site plan design as we move forward. I don't see that happening, and I like the size where the buildings live today. And so you can kind of see where TVA is routing as well. And just to make a point, I think Mike mentioned it, but you will see, will this work off the TV? Not really. But you will see some of this extra detention in here that we've added and will be used if needed. Move to the next slide here. As it pertains to buffering, in the PUD requirement requires 50 feet of buffering between, you know, between us and the other property. We have 150 feet, if not more. And I'll show some more slides that depict that. But some of the concern, and again, we're listening to community members, and Doug brought it up in the response to the plan here in staff comments, was what would we do to minimize or to rectify some of the sound that might bounce off of the trucks should they be loading? Just so you understand, this is, this building right here is a cross dock, so trucks will load on both sides of this. Sound on this side, the trucks will back in here. You won't hear any of that. That's on the interstate side. And then this building also loads towards the interstate, so you shouldn't hear any of that either. Not to mention, you have 1,000 feet plus of buffer with 1,000 feet plus of buffer within this forest and detention. Now, this area over here, I understand it could be a concern, and we do have some community members who live off the backside and off shacklet. Reminder that these trucks do back in, right, and that beeping and that sound does move that way. Again, we have 17 to 20 million feet under construction around the country. And more often than not, this is an issue, you know, sound. And we, there are ways to limit that. We do follow OSHA guidelines, we'll follow state guidelines. But there are ways to rectify and try to limit sound, and we'll work through those as we get into our more site planning and design. Not to mention, off the backside here, we do have plus or minus 650 feet between where trucks load and the nearest house off the back here. Obviously, some of these houses off shacklet might be able to feel that. But you have, you know, close to 400-plus feet over there as well. So we do feel that we have significant buffer that we've left there. There will be the option to build up more berm and other buffer. We're even considering, you know, within site planning, possible maybe a privacy wall or a sound buffering wall to some extent in certain spots where maybe the landscape is thinner. Those are a lot of things that we would consider. And again, that's in later stages of site planning and design as we work with staff if we're approved here. This is just a, I don't know if we showed these diagrams last time, but I think they're significant. This is showing Elizabeth's house, and I forgot your last name, sir. Clark, I'm sorry. So this just uses the Clark's house as an example of one that's closest. But as you can see here, the significance of buffer that exists between the building and their house. Now, in the wintertime, is the brush as thick as it is every, you know, in other seasons? No. But the distance is there. And we believe that we have the right amount of buffering and exceeding that. Let me just move, this just shows some of the other houses, like off of shacklet. And this is in your packet, if you, you know, on your iPads, if you need to look at that. These are two, I don't want to, we used these last meeting, but this shows what was required in the PUD and how much we're exceeding it by in terms of foot of buffer between us and the nearest homes. Again, if you have questions on this, let me know. But I think this is something that everyone understands, and you can review in the packet as well. I want to get into ingress egress, and I'm going to bring Pete Schmidt up, our traffic engineer, to talk through a little bit of a few of these slides. And then I will, I'll take the mic back over. Do you want me to move this for you? You want to?
I don't think I have these ones yet.
Huh? There's a couple. It's mostly.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move it as you talk if you need to.
I think we only, I only need that one. I think I only need that one.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioners. I'm Peter Schmidt. I'm the engineer of record on this traffic impact study. I did this traffic study with Barge Design Solutions. We're one of the most established civil engineering firms headquartered in Nashville. I'm going to give you a brief overview of what we cover in the traffic study. I'll obviously be available for questions. I'm not going to go into full detail here, but just to give you all a quick picture of what we found when looking at the traffic. So, big picture, we take a look at the existing traffic, see what are the problems now. Then we look at what impact will the site have and what problems might the site generate. So, as Mike with the county addressed, when we look at the existing conditions, really obvious, you look at the three-way stop of Leanna and Sulfur Springs. An all-way stop is really the least efficient way to have an intersection because everyone has to stop. No one's running free. You have a big problem, especially in the PM, peak hour, where traffic's backing up, it's blocking the exit ramps. And that's what really feeds the biggest concern, which is that northbound off-ramp onto Sulfur Springs from Interstate 840. Because of the backup at that three-way stop, you know, you'll have backup that extends all the way to that ramp and back onto the interstate, which is a big concern for TDOT. So, big picture, those are the existing issues we see. We've also talked about, you know, cut through on Sulfur Springs going to, you know, Smyrna, the Nissan plant. But that's, if we focus on existing conditions, that's what we saw lines up with exactly with what Mike is seeing. So, the objective of our study is then look at the, with our project, compare the two, and see what impact is our project having. So, if you look at the trips we expect to be generated by this business park, it's really, really low compared to what you get from other land uses. I know big business parks might be, seem intimidating traffic-wise, but we looked at what we might see from other land uses. So, for this business park, there are 50 employees to a shift. These are off-peak hour shifts, so they're not happening during rush hour. We have trucks arriving throughout the day. If you were to put in what the sites are currently zoned for, you would see over twice as many trips, and those would be happening during rush hour, right? Those are the same people that are commuting and all that. And that's what it's zoned for. If you were to put in a denser land use, you know, denser housing or apartments or something like that, you might see five times even more than what this business park is generating. So, and that's much less if you put in a gas station, a school, or something like that, that would be astronomically more than what this site is generating, or we expect this site to generate. So, another comment on that is, like I said, these trips are all off-peak, so they're not happening during rush hour. They're also happening opposite direction of rush hour because there'll be employees coming in rather than people going, you know, down to Murfreesboro or Nashville for work. So, if you put in residential units here, you might see a lot of people going back over to the schools to the east and then coming back through, almost double counting as traffic. And you're not getting that with a business park here. So, when we look at what our site, what our site impacts compared to existing conditions, that's where we recommended the turn lanes going into those, the interstate ramps. So those would be the left turn lanes going to the east to go to the northbound Interstate 840, and then the turn lanes going in and out of the site. Really addressed the difference the site is making on the local traffic. Now, that doesn't address, obviously, the existing conditions, the existing problems. But as far as what the site is doing to the area, we really just want to make sure there's room for the trucks to be able to have a few stacked and be able to safely turn into the interstate and into the site access. The other big concern is with trucks going left onto Sulfur Springs, going out west, taking Sulfur Springs going over the bridge like we discussed. And that's where we recommended aggressive restrictions, especially physical ones. Obviously, you can tell someone to go left on a, with a sign. But if you force them to with the curbing and the delineators that you all have seen, we really think they'll be directed to the interstate. And all that traffic will only be between the site access and the interstate ramps, which is a lot more limited impact than what you see with any other land use that kind of just disseminates through all these intersections. So, if you look at the impact our site has, that's where our study recommended the turn lanes. Now, Mike, and we've been in discussions as far as the existing issues. If you look at the signal that's been discussed and all that, that takes pretty much the worst possible performing intersection with an all-way stop, and really is over and above anything we'd expect that intersection of Leanna and Sulfur Springs to undergo with the traffic. And especially given how directional it, like how it's directional during those peak hours, that is far and above addressing the traffic concerns that we saw in the area. So, that is a really quick summary of what we saw and the recommendations we gave. Obviously, I'll be here for questions as night goes on.
Thanks, Peter. Just to kind of give you some more detail here, I know that Doug spoke a little bit about this traffic. But what we did here was to really, and these are things that we've done in other developments around the country, but really to enable kind of a pinch on a semi-truck as it tries to move its way out of here. This median and this median are sitting about two feet high. And then what you have here is a row of concrete bollards that sit about four feet high. So if a truck, the truck is going to be moving this way, if it tried to work its way through here, it would, you know, suffer severe damage. And you just won't see it happen. However, it will fit emergency vehicles, it will fit cars, it will fit, you know, loading vans or whatever else. However, semi-trucks will be forced out the right way unless they want to damage the truck. That was the idea there. We have a few other views of how this will look. These are kind of those raised medians that I was talking about. This is the lane where you would force the truck out. There's your, there's your bollards. This is kind of looking at it from the opposite view, coming this way. Here's Hickory. Anyways, give you a good idea of what a truck would have to do to try to work his way through here. He'd really have to be stupid. The, right? I guess that's the end of that. Let me, and here's some more images of looking at that same intersection. But I think we've beat that to death. The, what we do want to talk about, I do want to talk a little bit more about what our traffic impact study showed was, as Mike mentioned, this being a true source of a lot of the traffic that builds up off, on the on-ramp, off-ramp, and all the way down Sulfur Springs. Stonemont, what we decided to do was be proactive and try to fix a problem that is a true off-site from our development. I mean, this really, you know, sure, we're going to be adding traffic, but this intersection is a true off-site from our development. But we wanted to be proactive, help the community. We'll be designing, doing the work, and paying for all that work to add a timed light there, a censored light that will help that traffic flow, and will help solve some other concerns as new communities are built in and around that intersection, which we know should or will be coming soon. Just more detail around that light and how that will look and feel. And we'll be able to answer more questions about that light if, if needed. Again, all of this, this was not just Stonemont, you know, working in a silo. We ran all of these ideas through staff, worked with their, with their folks, and tried to accommodate what we think might help alleviate some traffic and some of the problems that exist today. Stormwater hydrology study, as we mentioned in the last meeting, we do have a really good idea of where all the sinkholes live today. We made it a point to design around those in terms of the footprint of our buildings and where those land. The same with our detention. We've avoided the sinkholes. One of the biggest concerns that came up was water detention. How are we going to be storing that water? How is it released? And I wanted to bring Mark Lee up if he could, just to talk through the detention. And I'll go back to the site plan. And then I'll talk through some of the work that we did to understand what's under the ground.
Thank you, Dustin. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Mark Lee, a local civil engineer with Site Engineering Consultants. I've evaluated the site and the watershed that it lies in. And we're, we are aware of the onsite drainage challenges, and we propose to address those challenges. We will provide several stormwater detention ponds, which will address the stormwater quality and quantity. The site lies in a five-square-mile watershed whose flow is mostly underground. The conceptual plans you have before you show two very large detention pond footprints that total about 14 acres. Those ponds can easily be enlarged to provide additional storage volume if we wanted. Additionally, we have identified several areas around the site where more ponds can be added if desired. Preliminary detailed calculations indicate flows from the site could be reduced down to about 20% of current flows. While we can eliminate the flooding on Sulfur Springs Road, our intention is not to add to it. And we are comfortable that we have sufficient area onsite to handle our stormwater needs. If you have any questions in this regard, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Not yet. Almost. Almost, sorry. So, as it pertains to water, the detention, I think it's safe to say we're almost at twice our needed capacity, somewhere in that range.
Way more.
Way more than that. And so, I just want to make that a point that, again, as a developer, we focus solely on how much building can we fit on the amount of acreage that's there. We have 157 acres. Typically, you want to sit around 35% to 40% coverage with your buildings. We're less than 30 here. And as a developer, that's almost bad business. But what we're trying to do is accommodate all of the necessary needs that this site requires. I just want to, I want to just touch on two more things, and then I'll be done. What was asked of us was to do the best that we could to understand what's underneath the building and where will blasting be needed. That was a big concern, and we heard that from the neighbors and the neighborhood and from staff. How much blasting would be needed, and how much would that affect possible sinkholes or possible spreading of the sinkholes? What we did at our expense was we did some preliminary drilling to 25 feet each spot. We did, we drilled 36 test holes around the property wherever we can get. If you see an area where we didn't get, it's because there's 40-foot trees there, and we didn't want to start cutting down trees. And I know the neighbors would, you know, I wouldn't have such a nice picture on Facebook at that point. So, we didn't cut down the trees, but we did get everywhere we could around the perimeter of these buildings. And what you're seeing here, this is not in your packet, but it is a study that we did, what you're seeing there is where, where either we hit dirt, or we hit rock, or where dirt may be needed, based on where we know our soil level needs to be. And so, for the most part, where you see red, and this is full transparency, these are, all of these little dots are test holes and test drilling sites that we made. Wherever you see this red, that represents about two feet of rock that we may have hit, that anything around that size, two feet, three feet, we should be able to chip away at. We shouldn't have to blast. And there were three spots on this diagram where we did hit some rock that we may need to remove. But we wanted to do all those studies. As a reminder, a building this big and a project this big runs us in the neighborhood of 150 million plus, us, the developer. I'm not going to build on something that might cave in or have sinkholes under it or whatever. I can't afford to lose $150 million. So, we are going to do all of the due diligence and all of the geotechnical that's necessary. And we did this out of our own pocket at significant expense. This represents one, test drill 1 through 17. Here's the next, like, I think this is 17 through 33 or something like that. And notice on all of these spots, we did not hit rock at all. We actually had a handful of spots where we'll need to bring in some dirt, bring in some fill. And on this last slide, you will see we had this group of test spots right here, number, whatever it is, it's this one right here. We did hit somewhere around three to four feet of rock. Could that be a spot where we need to blast? Possibly. But we're not going to do it until we do further geotechnical, and that comes down the development pipeline here as we go through site planning and design. We're not going to risk doing anything horrible to what's underground. Like, we're going to figure out what's there. This represents close to $50,000 or $60,000 in our own spending just to figure out what's there to suffice kind of the questions that we ran into last We went over the TVA easement issue. I think everyone understands. We're well on our way. We have the preliminary approval. We feel 100% confident with where that lives today and how it lines up with our site plan. And they're working hand in hand with us and answering emails. And we've, that came at significant cost to us as well. I want to just say that, you know, Stonemont has done a lot of work that typically you wouldn't do until way later in the process. But we did want to be thorough. We wanted to make sure that, we knew this is a difficult site, and we wanted to make sure that we met and listened to everything staff was asking us to do, listened to everything that the residents in the neighborhood had concerns with, and tried to resolve them the best we can. the neighborhood had concerns with, and tried to resolve them the best we can. I will tell you that we have done everything that's been asked of us, and then some. We are improving off-site traffic issues. We are solving problems with flooding. We did, Mark went out and did a significant flooding study to our expense that helped understand a little bit more about when the roads flood and how they flood. Is it everything that we can fix? No, but it's information we passed on to the county. And we want to be arm-in-arm good partners with the county. Again, we already own property. We own buildings in the county. We have a tenant that is a Rutherford County business that wants to grow here. They want to leave Wilson County and come to this building. And that's how this, that was the genesis of this project and how it started. And we only work with, you know, really, really good tenants and good companies around the country. And, you know, we look forward to bringing that type of a business here. Lastly, I'll just say, as it pertains to a true rezone, a residential zoning, how it lives today, if you go and you look at all of this area that we're avoiding, that buffer area, it's loaded with rock, loaded. Like, we couldn't even drill in some of those areas. All of the buffer area that we're leaving alone, a lot of that forest and buffer that exists between us and some of these homes, if a residential community came here, they're building all in there, and they're blasting rock, and it's a huge problem. Maybe they would never even approve it. I don't know. But I'm telling you what it's zoned for today, if we're going to focus on that, is a problem. Traffic impact, you just heard the traffic engineer. He does not work for me. I want to dispel that rumor. Third-party guy, I forget his name constantly. He does not work for Stonemont. He was a third-party who was recommended to us, and that traffic study is 100% legit and real. And we know that a residential community would be two to three times the impact, at least, of what the industrial would provide. I do want to bring up Sarah to read these letters of support of those folks who aren't here. We'll do that quickly. After her remarks, Sean Henry, our land use attorney, is going to close up, and then I'll take any questions that the commissioners may have.
Hello, everybody. The first letter I have is from Benjamin Hatch. All of these are residents of the Leanna community.
And these are also in your packets.
Planning Commissioners of Rutherford County, I support the Sulphur Springs Business Park Development off 840 and Sulphur Springs Road. Development and growth are not a bad thing, and I believe that this development would help our county and community. This project would benefit the county financially by bringing in more jobs and adding to the tax revenue of a plot of land that is currently vacant. This is a welcome proposal for the area, and I hope that you will support this project. Sincerely, Benjamin Hatch. Planning Commissioners, I want to send in my support for the Sulphur Springs Business Park off of 840 in Leanna. This development is going to help our community out more than any other proposed plan for the plot of land. I've heard that there have been other proposed plans such as housing, and that is not something we need. We need more business growth in this area, and this is a perfect place to put a project like the distribution center. I ask that you approve this proposal to further business development here in Rutherford County. Sincerely, Chris Forstel. Dear Planning Commissioners, I'm writing to express my support for the Sulphur Springs Business Park. Nashville and the rest of the country are growing and developing so fast that we need to make sure we are not left behind in Rutherford County. The more business developments, the better we will be as a county and a community. Stonemont's plans for the development are friendly to the neighborhood, and we will benefit from having it in our community. Please support this project by approving it. Sincerely, Helen Hoffman. Dear Planning Commissioners, I'm writing to express my support for the Sulphur Springs Business Park. I heard that it was a business already in Rutherford County that wants to expand, and I fully support keeping our jobs and tax revenue here. I think development is coming this way regardless, and we should support businesses that are already here. My husband is a truck driver, so I support the supply chain industry, especially with all of the supply chain issues we have in this country right now. The more distribution centers we have, the better things will get. Please support Rutherford County businesses and the supply chain industry by approving the Sulphur Springs Business Park. Sincerely, Lori James. To whom it may concern, my name is James Lewis, and I'm a supporter of the Sulphur Springs Business Park. Having developments like the one going off Sulphur Springs Road help our property values increase. After talking with Stonemont's representatives and learning more about the project, I'm confident that the proposed plan will work well with our neighborhood and help our property values increase. Support the residents of Leanna by approving the Sulphur Springs Business Park. Sincerely, James Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Sean Henry, representing Stonemont. Mr. Damasi's done a really good job with your staff reports, very thorough. You can easily glance through there and see the bold text and see the update that you just heard from my client. Regarding the comprehensive plan, you can look at this site on the screen, oh, they took it down, but this site is certainly not appropriate for residential development. There at that interstate exit with Interstate 840, and when you take a comparison, just a quick comparison of that existing zoning, which is medium residential, if you can imagine 10 dwelling units per acre on this farmland, you would have hundreds of homes there, more utilities, power lines, water lines, sewer lines running all over that property to reach those hundreds of homes. Certainly more traffic and much less open space, and that's pretty important. And if a subdivision came before this planning commission as presently zoned, I'm certain, as a planning commission does, you would want to be sure that there's multiple points of access. So I'm sure you would want to have that subdivision connected to those surrounding streets that this development, as proposed, does not connect to. There will be no connections of those streets. This PUD site plan more than meets the minimum standards out of your zoning code, and what's interesting is it takes two turns for a vehicle or a truck to get off of that interstate and get into this property, and two turns for that truck to get back on that interstate and move its goods. Stonemont's going above and beyond, as was mentioned. They're addressing all the comments, they're addressing all the requirements, and they're going to deal with that troubled intersection on the other side of the interstate. They're spending their money to do something that their traffic impact study says is not attributable to the business park, but nonetheless, they're committed to addressing that. And I filed a letter today with Mr. Damasi committing that very thing for this project. So we want to make that for the record, by the way, Mr. Damasi. Finally, you're a countywide planning commission. Your concerns, your interests, your job, your role, and I know it's volunteer, and thank you, but it is countywide. And some locations are appropriate for zone changes, and some locations are not. You made a tough decision in your very first agenda item tonight to disapprove a zoning request. That was not a good location. This location makes perfect sense, perfect sense from a planning perspective. And so we ask that you send this zone change question onto the county commission with a positive recommendation. Let the county commission make the final vote, the final decision. We think this is very appropriate. So we appreciate your consideration here tonight. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, Sean. While we have the engineers here, is there any questions from the commissioners that we can take at this time?
Questions of the applicants? Stay close. Mike, you still down?
Yes, sir.
We're ready for our public hearing, and at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 22-014, Dustin Estates for SFG Murphysboro. Anyone wishing to speak, for or against this rezoning request, please come forward.
I'm going to keep this real simple and short. Last time I gave a presentation to show you all the flooding, the pictures, traffic, there's going to be a lot of that. I'm just going to focus on the flooding because that is my concern living next to this. They did a great job, hats off to Stonemont. I've met with them. They've been nothing but professional. They've listened to us. They've done a great job at holding and being able to do the water that they're going to have on their place. My problem is, and I keep going back to this, our problem in Leanna is not the surface water, it's underneath. And I know they spent some money on a geotech, a very small one, and I've talked to Doug, I've talked to this. Thought it was kind of funny, Chairman. Last May 9th, you spoke of the meetings coming and everything, and the next day I got a mail with that agenda. I thought you came and put it in my mailbox there for a second, but I've read through it. I actually went to these meetings. One of the biggest concerns in Rutherford County to the citizens is flooding. We have to do a better job and have the right data to make a great, a good decision. And I think it was called, Chairman Windworth said that, do we make a decision at 20, 30 years, we're going to regret. This is one of those properties that if we don't have the data, I'm afraid y'all are going to make that mistake. We know now through the dye test, Hooper Bottoms comes through Leanna. That's where our flooding comes from, is Hooper's Bottom. It is the underwater caverns or whatever it is that makes up it all. All the sinkholes between Hooper's Bottom and Nice Mill are all connected. When this building, you ask for it to be smaller, 60,000 square feet or whatever that was, the footprint is too much for this land. I'm not saying we can't build on it, but the size of this thing, is it the right choice for this land? What is this going to do to the impact of that ground underneath? I really think there needs to be a more intense geotech done, not just on this land, but in the Leanna community, for what all that's going on in Rutherford County right now is impacting us on a daily basis. Like I said, there are no creeks in Leanna. Our water does not flow to Stone's River. Our water puddles, it ponds, it goes to sinkholes, goes underneath the ground, and it all works its way to Stone's River. So I just ask again for the commissioners to please take in consideration of the underground flooding and the geotech of this area. It's a delicate piece of land. It's a land that's got to have the right data, and I hope y'all have that data. Thank you.
Hopefully it works. All right, guys. I just got a few things to go over here before I have a short drone video. Hopefully it will play. So the drone footage was shot on March 29th, 2021, and I'm sure it's the people that live out on Sulphur Springs Road and the Leanna community remember that that flood was slightly worse than the one we get every March, you know. So, and that one about flooded my house, and it was about as bad as the flood was back in 2010, whenever that happened. And we do actually have, my pond on my property is, I'd say, about two acres large, and it is actually spring-fed, which is fed by those underground aquifers. And I'll say, just two weeks ago, the pond was completely dry. Okay, so before the last weekend, the pond was completely dry, and there's a picture of this in the video. And then after, over the weekend, there's also a photo that shows it half-full, and that's how much water comes through the area. It filled a two-acre pond half-full over just the small amount of rain that we had after this, you know, extra dry summer. So, and then also, I want to let you know that if you look on your Apple iPhone, on the Apple Maps, and switch it to the satellite view, the photograph on the Apple Maps is actually, the entire road is flooded. So that's how often it floods out there, is that when they took their satellite image from space of the maps of the roads, they actually took it, and it's, the entire road's flooded, my backfield's flooded, and everything is flooded. So I guess if we're going to try to play the video, I'll try to tell you guys the dates for the photographs and the drone footage. So this is the drone footage flying down over the road, Sulphur Springs Road, and we're at Leanna, I believe, and it's going down here, and you can see the 18-wheeler down here with the Aldi Foods truck decided that he was going to try to float to the And, you know, there's nothing you can do about this flooding. So, and I'm just worried that if you add more water to the other side, that maybe it would all just connect, you know? Because there's obviously, this seems to be getting worse. I've lived here my whole life, and it has just gotten worse the whole time, so.
I want to point something out that I picked up on this. You can see this white right here. This is ripples of water flowing into a large sinkhole right here. And if my maps will work, I'll show you on the maps. But he's correct, these are all interconnected, and this basin has filled up, and it's spilling into, this is one of the points where it's going into the subsurface.
Right, and all this water comes up out of the ground from behind my house. There's a cave system. There's actually caves on my property.
This is Sulphur Springs right here. I think this, let's see. I think this is East Buckeye Bottom. I could be wrong, but I think.
Yeah, I believe that is right.
Right there, maybe. That's somebody's driveway up here.
And see, this is a pond here to your right. There's a spring-fed pond, and there's actually a, my camera will shift to the right in a moment, so.
Go back a little bit, and you could see debris where the water was actually higher.
Yeah, this was actually taken a day after the highest waters. The photographs after this were from the day of the flooding, but this was actually the day afterwards. So the water had actually gone down a little bit here, quite a bit, really, so. As you can see, there's actually a bridge and a driveway here that goes through, and that never floods, but it did. And this is a photo from the day before, and this is my neighbor's house over here to the left, and this is my shop here, and it actually flooded my shop, about a foot of water in the shop. And you can see how close this is getting to the level of my house here. And this is where water comes up out of the ground. This was taken this morning, and this was taken this morning of the water after the weekend rain, and this was taken last week from the same location. So that's how much water actually come into the area over a three-day period, in the last three days. So that's how much water we're dealing with here in Leanna, and you just need to know that. So I really appreciate you guys, and have a great night.
And also, my computer continues to work. This is the May 2010 flood imagery. They, it rained May 1st and 2nd of May 2010, and they flew this area May 4th. So it was two days after it quit raining. And you can see, much like his video, Sulphur Springs is underwater. Look at the topography, look at it, it's a large bowl right here.
Good evening. It feels like morning to me. I get up about 4:00 in the morning.
I get up about four o'clock in the morning, so y'all got this, but, but folks, I got, I got three things. I'm going to make it quick. This is nothing against anybody trying to sell their property or anything, I understand. But, and you see, we went 25 feet. If you'd went 30, y'all would have found something different. I drilled a well at my house I've lived in for 20 years, 15 years ago, at 30 feet, and I live on Shacklet Road, across the road from the Clarks. At 30 feet, the bit dropped 20-foot. 20-foot. When they was blasting over on Broad Street back in the spring to build all those condos over there, I was mowing my yard, and there was my pond in my front yard with a fountain, and it was gone in just a matter of minutes. You know what happened? A hole popped up in my pond and took my pond away. And I have stand back, didn't get some of it back. But when I got over there, I listened. 30 feet down, I'm guessing, maybe 20 feet, 20 or 30 feet down, it was running into a large body of water. My house is sitting on those caves and stuff that they're talking about. And, and the study really needs to be done a lot more before anything of this size puts in. Next thing is the jobs that's coming. I wish they were like Nissan. I spent 25 years there and made a great retirement, quit. I wish they were good-paying jobs, but they're not going to be. I want y'all to take that in before we do other. The traffic is unbearable. I come in and out, I'm a farmer now, I haul hay, sell hay for a living, and I come in and out, that intersection from daylight to dark. That is terrible, terrible. We do not need the traffic. We are not ready for this. Second thing is, this is a favor to me, I'm asking y'all to vote tonight to put it to sleep. I love my community. We have been in and out of Leanna for 35, 40 years now. We've made our home, I want to keep it that way. The planning commission realized a long time ago that this needed to be residential area. I'm asking you to keep it as a bedroom community. I love my little town. I'm asking y'all not to turn it into something that everybody dreads going up and down the road to have to go through the traffic.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Steve Wright. I'm one of the five owners. My sisters and I and Kendall own the property. My sisters and I lead our second generation, the second generation of our family construction business. And by the way, we're good customers of Roger Group, and they told you the truth, they are great people. But, excuse me. I tell you all that because we were building 840, or one section of it, down at I-24 to 41, and back up this way just a little bit. And my uncle and father bought this piece of property as an investment, mostly because, you know, we're from Bedford County, a little community called Fairfield, which is like five people or something. And, and we always thought Murfreesboro was the cool place, and believed in it, believed in the growth hits here, and that is, over the last 30 years, has turned out to be very true. Y'all, y'all have done a beautiful job running, running your county. I live in East Tennessee now, and I always tell them they need to come to Murfreesboro and Rutherford County and see how to, if you really want your county to grow. Y'all have done, done a great job with that. I do appreciate it. Three years ago, you know, as you can see, I'm aging out, and we're at the end of the second generation, and we partnered up with Kendall and decided that we needed to, to quit holding this property and, and do something with it. And, and that's why we're here. We've looked at, over the last three years, I think we've looked at four or five different developers. We've looked at every possible use from many homes, I mean, from hundreds of homes to, to the warehouse sites, and, and we're absolutely convinced that in Stonemont, we have found the right, the right developer. You know, they have the local contacts and the local client that, that's not going to put any additional pressure on, on the community, that we believe they're the, the best developer we've run into. They've addressed every possible issue that's within anything that we can control, and even one or two that's not, that's been asked of them by the community or the professional staff who have been great to work with here as well. So they've gone the extra mile, and, and, and I believe that, that the, the putting in of the stoplight over at Leona and Sulfur, Sulfur Springs will, will make what was absolutely a worst-case scenario, I've heard described as a best-case scenario for, for that. So, you know, we, we've got a great plan, we believe this to be the highest and best use of this property, and we would prayerfully and humbly ask you to approve our zoning request.
Hello, my name is Pat Ramsey, and I live on Hickory Lane, and I represent 16 families that live on Hickory Lane. Hickory Lane is right across from where they want to put their vehicles in and out. It's the only place they have, and we are on this side of it. So I want us to have, I'm going to read because I've got to stay out of the tall grass. And the only way to stay out of the tall grass for me is to read. First, we want to thank Stonemont for taking the time to meet with us regularly on the proposed changes. We've listened, we've discussed, and we understand where they're coming from, but we still don't want to rezone. Our main reasons for continuing to fight this rezoning are our loss of community, increase in traffic, noise, and lighting. We believe that it will be a loss of community in Rutherford, because we are one of the last small communities in Rutherford County. We have old, new, young, established families here that have made and are making memories. None of these memories will be enhanced with traffic, noise, and unwanted businesses. We moved and stayed here for the land, the people, the quiet nature around us. The building of 840 threatened all that, but commercializing this land would fully take it to a new level. Trucks threaten the quiet we seek, traffic threatens our daily routines and lives, noise and light pollution threaten our environment. By commercializing this land, we fear more businesses of this type will follow and force us out of the homes that we've worked so hard to create and maintain. For our 16 families to get out of the road and onto Sulfur Springs will be an utter nightmare. Stonemont suggested that they could put a light there for us, but the council said no, because there's not enough traffic. 16 families, that's not that many. So how are we going to get out when you've got three or four semis trying to turn in and not have an accident? I have served with Rutherford County Sheriff's Department for 21 years as a traffic person. I work off of Thompson Lane, so I understand traffic. I live, I work right across from the new home developments that have 520 homes right there. We never have more than 12 cars coming in or out during the school time. I'm opposed to large companies with trucks. We understand how valuable they are to businesses and creating jobs. Excuse me. My husband worked for a truck trailer firm for over 30 years, and he worked across the coun, country in California, Arizona, Florida. One thing these all had in common, however, was that they were in commercial areas. There were no homes around due to the noise, the traffic, and the light pollutions. These companies were, new positive and negative they brought and balanced them. By rezoning this land, you are not creating balance. You are causing disruption through the loud exhausts of the trucks as they slow down to turn, bright lights and additional traffic. You said there will be seven trucks per hour going in and out, but that number keeps fluctuating. First, we heard 300. Now, I don't know what it is. But that's not including the workers or the renters in the smaller property, the smaller building. We don't know how many people are going to go into that smaller building, how much more traffic is going to be added to that. You've also said there will be three shifts a day, so that's running 24/7. 24/7 traffic, 24/7 noise, 24/7 lights. And this, we have school buses that stop right there on Hickory Lane because we have children. What's happening to those school buses when you've got trucks coming this way and that way, and in and out? I have been told by Stonemont that those shifts would be opposite, they would not be during the school time. How can you control when trucks have to make a drop-off or fill up? You can't. Truckers are going to do what they want to do when they have to do it. It's going to be an overloaded mess. I, I commend them on their effort to make a stoplight at the three-way stop. That, that needs to be done. I'm sorry. The back roads are not meant to accommodate large trucks and large amounts of traffic. The roads have to be kept up by the county, who is going to keep up the roads from the damage done by so many trucks coming in and out. We have three homes, well, actually four, if you count the home on this side of Hickory Lane. You have three homes on this side. There's no buffer. There is nothing that's going to help those people with the sound, because they're right there. They're right there on Sulfur Springs Road. Who's going to help them? There is a buffer where Travis lives. They, they were going to put a fence up there. But there's nothing for these three homes, and they have to come down Sulfur Springs and come into Hickory Lane to get to their homes. So they're going to be having all the light, all the noise, everything. We feel for them, but we feel for us too, to try and get in and get to our jobs, and even go to the grocery store. So I don't think that adding just enough street to get past Hickory Lane, just barely past Hickory Lane, is going to solve that problem. Then we have some other unknowns. Will trucks that already park on, on and off ramps to sleep, will there be more of those waiting for their time to go in and out? That impacts the safety and the traffic of our neighborhoods. And Stonemont did say that they would, no, that they could send people out to pick, take pictures of our foundations. And then after the blasting, if we had any complaints, they would take care of that. They said, but they didn't say for sure. That was just a, a thing that, that we talked about. We appreciate the effort to get the light out there, light for us, but it was denied. So that's a traffic issue for us. The ramps are already backed up during peak traffic period, but they also back up on Sulfur Springs Road going out. Water retention? You're not digging holes for water retention, you're putting it above ground, correct? You're, you're putting them, you're, you're mounding the dirt to put the water in, right? No? Yes? Okay. Water through time erodes dirt. Who's going to be taking care of that? Who's going to be supervising it and making sure that those, I don't know what you call them, berms or whatever, hold the water in and aren't taking the easiest route out through a crack or something? Anyway, that, that's basically all I have to say. I just appreciate and value you people listening. I'm sorry it's so late. We do not support rezoning this land, no, none of the families on Hickory Lane do. I realize that we were the small, small section, but our road, our, our little piece of land in there is the one that's being compromised the most, and they're not doing anything about that. So why insist on building where families are living and growing? Why not go to an area that was made for larger companies, such as your company? Don't, don't be the reason for a loss in our community and increase in traffic and noise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Most of you would probably guess Ms. Ramsey took a little bit more than three minutes, but our rules also give me a little leeway when a person is representing more than themselves. So that leeway was granted to Mrs. Ramsey, but I would ask if you would please try to adhere to the three minutes as closely as you can.
Folks, thank you all. I know it's late, and I'll keep mine to three minutes. I spoke at every meeting, my position hasn't changed. Leanna is a community, it is a family community. Been there for 20-some years, more so. I think you know me, you will flood us all out. It, it is going to happen, and I hope your conscience is strong enough to realize that. We seen it, those of us that have been there for the length and duration, we've seen it continue to grow. Hooper Bottom feeds it. We've seen it as the rest of the city's grown, we totally get it. But we are the end recipient of this water, and it continues. You can do all you can do, and I, I respect you, because I've tried to do some of the same things to try to solve it on my own property, and that you just, there's not enough money and not enough, especially within the county, without it coming back to us, to support it, to physically control it. And you're just going to wipe out a community of homes, families, seniors. I'm almost there myself from outside. Now, I don't have any intentions of moving, but I have what I feel like a very nice place on the side of the river, and you're going to, you're going to take my place. You really will. Maybe not today, five years from now, if the population density grows, things change. I just ask you, please consider it. You're going, you're going to take us down, right, wrong, or indifferent. You, it's all in your hands. May God bless you, that's all I can say. That's all I can say.
I'm probably going to be the most recent neighbor on Shacklet because I've been, my wife and I have been building a house out there and finally going to get to move in later this month, and it's directly across the street from the proposed site. The one thing I want to remind some folks, because I know it's been mentioned before about the safety. We're talking about traffic flow, but I can tell you from the time that I've been out to my property, and usually it's on weekends to do some work, I see a lot of bicyclists. There's people that like to ride their bike over there and have fun, motorcyclists and things of that nature. The traffic light that we're proposing, I hope it gets done before any talk about building an industrial park or anything, but I heard in the last meeting someone mentioned some properties aren't meant to be developed. Maybe this is it. There's too many concerns with it. I'm concerned for increased traffic on Shacklet because people will use that as a bypass and to avoid that traffic on that end. I have grandchildren I plan to have over there. I don't want them close to that road because people already fly on that road as a bypass. It's only going to increase. So I appreciate your all's thought on that, and I'll keep it short. So thank you very much.
All right, good evening. I too have been here quite a while tonight. I know everybody's ready to get out of here, but I want to bring up some key points. I talked last time, brought some of those key points up at that time, but they need to be reiterated to some extent. First thing is the water. Everybody's talked about the water tonight. The water's going somewhere. When I built the house, and I'm at 5076 Sulphur Springs Road, I'm the last house on the right before you get Nice Mill Dam. When I built the house, ran into soft soil because of the water. House plans called for 40 yards of concrete. I put 117 yards of concrete underneath that house to support it. I pushed the water out. I had to try and not push it to my neighbors. The water is going to go somewhere. We talked about that last meeting. I said, "Take a cup of coffee. Pour sand in it." Where's coffee going? It's going out. They build, it's 40,000 feet reduced. It's still going to push the water. We've talked about the sinkholes. The sinkholes are going to push the water. We're going to pay the price for it. We being the neighbors. They've got the money to support it. We don't. We're a local community. Leanna is a local community. We don't need this size of an industry in a local community. Second thing, traffic. Talked about it last time. You've got turning lanes. They're proposing putting in 150-foot turning lane. That's two trucks, two 75-foot rigs. You put two trucks in those turning lanes, where's the third one going to go? Where's all the traffic going to go from Nissan? It's going to back up the road. To her point, how's she going to get out of her neighborhood? We've got all those trucks in there. It's not going to fit. The traffic light, I am against that traffic light. Mike, with all due respect, we got drone footage of one day. How many people were going to the dump and recycling center right around the corner? How many people are going to be coming out of that, coming back into that intersection, shutting that intersection down? Where's the traffic going? It's going back to us. And I'm going to have to find another way to go to work. I work for the railroad. I go to Nashville every morning and work for the railroad. You want to talk about noise? Go up there and listen to their buffer and their walls. It doesn't work. These neighbors close by are still going to hear all those trucks beepers. I've got a work truck. My mother lives right next door to me. My neighbor's across the road. My work truck has a beeper on it. You know how many times I get told by my neighbors that they hear my backup beeper? So I have to be strategic in how I park so I don't wake them up when I leave the house at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning? The noise is going to be there. Who's it going to affect? Not them, us. We're the ones that get affected by it. We talked about it several times tonight, even in the prayer, talking about the people. We're the people, and we're telling you, it's going to affect us. The water, the noise, the traffic, it's all going to affect us. Not going to affect them. It's going to affect us. I have all due respect for Kendall. He coached my kid in basketball. Kendall and I go way back, but I'm against this project 1,000 percent. And I hope you guys will see the point I made and vote against it. Thank you for your time.
I'd just like to say hard to everybody. Water, water everywhere, and there's not a drop to drink. It's all under the ground. I wish some of it would actually pop up about right now. I hear spring, underground spring. I hear community. Do we have a map of the Leanna community that we could show? What is Leanna and what's not Leanna? I've lived there 30 years, and I've never even seen. I think we used to have a little sign, but it's no longer there. We used to have a community center. It's no longer there. Used to have baseball fields. They're no longer there. So when I hear everybody talk about how much you care for your community, your community is gone. If you cared about it, you wouldn't have let them tore down. Actually, was the first school in Leanna, the community center. You wouldn't have got rid of the baseball parks. And the flooding was as bad as everybody says. Why does people keep building in Leanna? Why? Now, I hear underground springs. Take it, there's not that many in my neighborhood, but the river is beside my house. So whether it's in Leanna or if it's all the way down on the other side of Nice's Mill Dam, the water keeps coming up behind my house. So it doesn't matter what side you're on. Yes, the spring goes under the ground. You can see the water run there. It goes all the way to West Buckeye Bottom. If you go back to there, it goes out into the river. So you actually can control the water if you could get the Corps of Engineers to keep the river low, but we ain't going to do that. I think these people have been over backwards to please people. You're not going to please people. You're not going to please all of us. Might not please me on some. Traffic? They haven't created the traffic in and out the way it sits. The traffic has already been created by overbuilding of subdivisions and not enough expansion of the roads beforehand. So I hope y'all keep that in mind. Nothing personal, but just stop all the building in Leanna community if you want to stop these people. Because everybody's going to flood and drown. That swamp's going to come up and suck us all in, and I disagree with every bit of it. I want them to build it. I don't want a subdivision. I don't want apartments. Maybe this city could put a park in there, but then what's that going to cost? You wouldn't be able to take your kids to it because all the crazy or the homeless would take it over. So it's a win-win, lose-lose situation. You're not making half of us happy. You're not going to make the other half happy. Somebody's got to gripe. I lived there for 30 years, and the river's in my backyard compared to what it used to be when it rains. These springs, I can't say they affect me. I don't want to lie and say they don't affect the neighbor across the street, but as a whole, there is no community of Leanna left. If people cared about their community, we would have something in the community besides a dump that they're now building, a dollar store, a rundown funky market, a couple of churches, which I have attended, and they're very nice people. I don't know how many people in this room has actually ever attended a church in our community, but they're nice churches. But the point is, there is no community of Leanna. If it is, I would like to see where it's at. You can drive around the block. There's a dump and a dumpy store and a couple of churches. Yes, we have businesses, but when you want to talk about community, the community has been gone for a long time. I would even like to see a sign somewhere, but I don't guess I'm going to see that. That's really all I have to say. But I want to thank the people, that Stone Mart or whoever your name is. I don't know names. I don't know names of the underground springs. I do know the name of Stone's River, and when they get through building this big sports complex on Murfreesboro, see what that does to the river every time it rains because it's right in my backyard, and I don't have a spring under my house. And that's really all I got to say, except when it does rain, it does flood. I lived at the last house in the subdivision, and I get everybody's stuff, so I know how bad it gets. So if I can't get to work, which I don't work, I'm not going to lie, but my wife can't get to work, hey, get a free day off, take a vacation day. That's all I got to say. Y'all have a nice night.
Anyone else?
First of all, I want to apologize to Chairman Phillips because I told him I would not speak. However, I promised somebody I would. I've been out there 45 years plus, and it flooded just as much back then as it does God himself is the only one that's going to fix that water problem. My understanding is this development, the way it's designed now, will not make things any worse on anybody else because they're trapping the water. But I've been there long enough. Mr. Sanders showed some pictures of the Shacklet Road stop sign, where you could see about that much of it. I've seen it where you couldn't even see the sign, and that was 35 years ago. The water's there. It's going to stay there. I don't know what the fix is. God himself knows, and he's the only one that's going to be able to fix it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last call. Public hearing's closed.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, where are you at as of today on the discussions you've had with the Stone Mountain team and the things that you've heard, the things that you've gone through with them? Where do you stand tonight as far as with the overall drainage situation based on the facts that we know as they are here?
I'm seeing the pieces are in place. I've asked them to over detain. They can't solve the problem, but they can hopefully lessen the problem by holding more water back on their property and before it gets released, if it gets released at all. So I keep pulling up some maps. This is a dye trace, and I don't remember who the resident was, but there essentially is a river that flows underneath a lot of this area. It comes from Hooper Bottoms even southeast of that. So the pieces are in place. I think they're a lot closer than they've ever been. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done, so we're still going to have to see a site plan. We're still going to have to see drainage calculations. We're still going to have to see improvements to the area. So what we do, you know, is we review the plans, the calculations, everything to make sure that we're not impacting the surrounding residents than they've already, than they already are. So if we can make it better, we're going to try to do that. The difficult decision rests with y'all. So I can, I'm an engineer, you know, Lee and Mike are engineers. We're problem solvers. We try to solve problems. I think they've got a good team together that can then come up with a solution. So traffic, I think with that, traffic signal will help a lot, alleviate a lot of backlog that goes up towards the interchange. Is it, you know, the turn lanes will help take the traffic off, you know? From what we've been told, they've overestimated the smaller warehouse use. They don't know what's coming there, so they've been very conservative and overestimated the traffic for that. They know what they're going to have in the larger warehouse because they know they've got an end user, but they've overestimated the smaller one. So I'm feeling confident with what they're proposing, the pieces that they've got in place. They can make this work. Again, difficult decision, y'alls and the county commission ultimately.
What's happened on the property when the water's got up in the surrounding area? What have we seen? Do we have anything as far as the property itself and the confidence to be able to hold whatever water comes up or comes down, whichever it may be, on the property to hold it and release it in a fashion that doesn't cause those issues?
So they talked about the alternative if this was developed as a residential subdivision. So residential subdivision is going to have a large step system or septic system footprint. That's going to take up valuable space, space that they don't need as much of for a commercial industrial user. So their footprint for septic system is a lot smaller. That means they've opened up a lot more room for stormwater management. They've got room to expand what they're doing now. So if they did a residential development, you know, you would have a large step system lot, you've got infrastructure roads, you've got doing a smaller lot subdivision, you've got to have open space amenities and things like that. So that's taking away from areas that could be used for stormwater. So I'm saying the pieces are in place. You've got a large areas for stormwater management, and so I'm thinking that, you know, I haven't seen the final design, but the pieces are there.
I have a question, Commissioner. So Mike, on the 16 families that are going to be trapped on Hickory Lane, what's the solution for that?
That is going to be, that I don't know. That's something we'll need to work on. Now, there's an opportunity to give them a little bit of a left turn lane. Now, there's an opportunity to give them a little bit of a left turn lane coming from the west, going east and turning in, but the lady that lives on Hickory Lane, that made a valid point, you know. If there's a queue of trucks waiting to turn left into this development, they're gonna have a challenge getting out.
Mike, would a light at the intersection right there where they'll be coming out, is that of any, or Doug, either one, is that, would that be of any value to helping, not just the one across the interstate, but the one right there as far as the neighbors go?
I mean, would it help? I mean, it would, it would give those people trying to turn left out of Hickory Lane, it would give them a clear amount of time to get out. Now, you know, of course, the recommendations and things that were presented to us in the traffic study, and I forget the exact numbers at this point as far as the number of trucks per hour, but I think we need to be realistic to some extent. I don't think it's gonna be a situation where it's gonna be queued trucks all the time, from what they're telling us at least. I'm not saying it's gonna be more of a challenge to get out, I just don't know if it's gonna be quite to that extent. But, you know, that's just kind of my thoughts on it.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Doug and for Mike. So is this one of those times, we haven't talked about the need for a hydrologist report in some time. This is such a water-intensive, unique area. Is there any value to getting another level of expertise involved in this? And what do you think on that answer? Here's the reason I ask. At some point, common sense has to prevail. And common sense tells us from looking at the pictures, there's extreme water issues out there right now. And I know with enough time and money, you can engineer solutions. But my concern is always the what-if. What if we get it wrong? What if?
Right.
And so anything we can do to make sure that we've, you know, crossed every T, dotted every I, but as thorough as possible, I don't think, this is one of those parcels of land and the impact that it's gonna have on those neighbors out there, I don't think we can be too careful. I don't think we can go too far in making sure. And I fully respect Stone Mountain, their approach on this, that they're not gonna sink money into something that's not gonna be worthwhile. That's common sense as well, I completely get that. But I just have a very high level of anxiety about developing this particular parcel of land. For a little bit too with the traffic, it feels like we're putting 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag when you're only stacking up a short distance of trucks. And then also, when you're trapping neighbors in their, on their streets, again, it's those common sense pieces that tell me, this is not gonna flow easily. They might intend to be a good neighbor, but this doesn't feel like a good neighbor situation. So now you can give me the hydrologist answer.
Right. Well, I've talked to Dr. Albert Ogden several times, not specifically this one, but other problem areas. Shores Road, for instance. They've traced a lot of that water that comes out on Military Springs. And I asked Dr. Ogden, I said, what if you opened up that discharge point at Military Springs to allow it to get into overall creek and get it out? He said, there's such, it's such a large watershed, you would have to open up a massive tunnel to even make a bit of difference. So I don't know if, if a hydrologist in this case would make a difference. What they've discussed is not going down with the ponds, but holding it, letting it spread out, a larger area, holding it back until the water in these other sinkholes start to go down. So that's, that's kind of the game plan that they've got. So like I said, the pieces are in play, it's just a difficult decision. It's a difficult decision that y'all have to make, that we can make this work, we can solve this, you know, with the reduced, if you remember originally, they wanted like two and a half million square foot building on this piece of property. And that was gonna pretty much take up most of the usable space. They've scaled that back, they've, you know, reduced it, added buffers, an open area, and this, this development has room for holding back a tremendous amount of water. And I think the engineer said that multiple times of water that they were planning on holding back. So that's what we, I represent the people. I mean, I scrutinize everything that comes to us to make sure that if we can limit the impact to what it is now, and maybe even improve it, that's what we try to do. You know, they brought up the fact that they didn't feel that that traffic three-way stop was anything to do with this development. But knowing that traffic queues up all the way to the interchange, adding a few trucks per hour, semis per hour, that's gonna make it worse, in my opinion. And I wish I could play the video, but it just keeps locking up on me. But, so we're, we're trying to make it no worse than it is, make it better if we can. But I think with the design team they've got and the plan that they've got right now, the pieces are in place that they can make this work. Again, I say it, and I'm a broken record, y'all have the difficult decision.
To me, we're looking at this piece of land, would it, you know, take, take into account the struggles that are before all of us, as we've seen this tonight now for the, for several times to say the least. But, you know, we're looking at what the use of the land can be. I mean, we're looking at the zoning. You know, I'm confident, you know, that Mike, that when it comes down to the site plan phase of it and all that, I mean, a lot of this stuff will take, you know, and I'm confident in you, Mike, that you won't allow anything to be approved under your watch, and then of course, under this commission's watch, that we don't feel is safe. And that's why we, we look to you, we look to Doug. We trust you guys, and we know we want what's best for the community, we want what's best for the county. We want everybody to be happy. But as I look at the prospective use of the property, I still come back to the fact of, you know, do I feel more comfortable with it, the zoning that it is, which it's, which is residential, which can be, houses be built on it tomorrow, as long as it goes through y'all's approval process. We would never necessarily see it except at the preliminary and the site plan stage of this. You know, so that's the question I'm asking myself, you know, what's the best use of the property in conjunction with what? I mean, the infrastructure's there. I mean, when it was decided to put an intersection there at 840, it was, there was, there was a reason looking into the future of what this property could be used for. I mean, I appreciate the community. I mean, you guys have put in a lot of, a lot of effort into this, and, you know, you spoke, and it, you know, you're to be commended, and, you know, I'm appreciative of that. And this is not a decision that's, that's easy for all of us, and it's a very tough decision. But, you know, as we've had time to study it, from my perspective, as I've had time to study it, and I look at it, and I look at the prospective use, the changes that have been, you know, proposed, the confidence I have in Mike and Doug, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a recommendation tonight and a motion to approve this, subject to all staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 22-104 for Dustin Estes. Other questions and comments?
Chairman, will you roll call vote, please?
Got it. Other questions and comments? Want to have a roll call on this? Gail, are you ready? Call the roll.
M. Averwater?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
Chip Penyon?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Phil Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No. Once again, this is a recommending body, and this will be heard before the full county commission on August, was it the 11th? August the 11th, right here in this courtroom, and it'll be, public hearings will start somewhere around 6:30. Item 6B5, we have recommended amendments to our county subdivision regulations pertaining to cul-de-sacs, to cul-de-sacs widths particularly, and the item number is ORD 22-001. And staff, this is all yours.
Yes, sir, thank you. We presented potential amendments to the planning commission back in May of this year. County fire and rescue staff have been coordinating with us regarding the cul-de-sac width, other issues that we'll see in the future, but specifically right now, just dealing with cul-de-sac width. These changes will allow our subdivision regulations to be consistent with the adopted fire code, which there are some proposed changes gonna be made to that at some point in the future as well, so everything will coordinate. Amendments to the subdivision regulations do require a public hearing, but they do not require a board of commission action. So any action you take here ends here, and then at that point, we would, you know, just make the changes to the document as such. Couple of items that are included with the staff report and your agenda comments on the iPads, Mike talked about this last time, these are from the city of Franklin, but this kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. We will tweak these to make them consistent with what we want. Basically, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but 96-foot diameter of pavement along...
48-foot radius.
Yeah, 48-foot radius in the cul-de-sac with 110-foot right-of-way. 110-foot is actually the current right-of-way we have for a ditch section road, but this would be more of a, again, curb and gutter type situation. But Mike, I'll let you make any additional comments on that.
Well, like Doug said, this is to match the fire code. They're asking for a 96-foot radius for the larger fire trucks for their turning movements. And that's all we're doing is to, to bring our subdivision regulations up to fire code.
Yeah. And I believe Josh Sanders, is he still, oh yeah, he's still down there. Make sure he didn't bolt on us in the middle of public hearings. But Josh, obviously, if you have any comments as well, please.
No, Doug, I think that pretty well sums it up. In short, very simply, this is just to bring us inconsistency with the fire code, which is already in place in the county, so.
Questions? Motion?
We need a public hearing first.
Oh, really?
I'm sorry.
Jason Laxton?
I want to go home too, but I'm sorry. We gotta have a public hearing.
At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 22-001, amendments to our county subdivision regulations pertaining to cul-de-sac widths.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Wait a second. I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request or this amendment request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Pettis, you're up. I have a motion and a second to approve, to approve ORD 22-001. This is an amendment to our subdivision regulations. All who's in favor...
Chairman, can we do, can we do a roll call vote on this?
All who's in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve, carries, thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for 9:00 a.m., July 25th. I guess that's the right date.
I checked, that is the right date.
July 25th, it'll be here in this room. One comment from your chairman. I appreciate your patience, your attendance, and most of all, your participation. This was a contentious evening for a lot of people, and I appreciate your input one way or the other. The community came out a winner tonight. So I appreciate more than I can tell you, you staying here with me and with staff and seeing it to the end, and all of your input and all of your patience. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.